System. And it's in here, but not a suppression system.
Why don't you?
I can do it.
Get some beds or estimate on putting a sprinkler resistance in for him.
Well, I could do it. I think a water system and everything have to supply because the building would all have to be upgraded. I'd provide that.
This brand new place.
In the building, it's quite aesthetically designed.
These are jokes.
Sprinker pipe would be exposed everywhere.
Okay. So it was just Maurice Ray's is a valid point. And I think we'll have to look at what it would cost. I don't think we're prepared to budget for it right now, but I'd like to know pretty soon.
I guess where my frustration come in is I keep getting these lame excuses about why we're not complying with basic safety code that's required in this whole state. You know, and he makes some innocuous statements, uh, well, you know, it costs too much money. How much money is a light work? How many times, you ever seen a bird body? I don't think so. Because somebody couldn't get out of a building because there's no water? Are you kidding me? Excuse me.
Before I came along, nobody was even concerned about fire laws.
I've never heard you bring it up in court. He singled out.
Oh.
Let's move on, let's move on. If anybody want to do it, he might have that right now.
Judge, there's only one question about the records.
Yes, ma'am.
That you're talking about and having them on the later end is one thing. But the old records, the old documents that are historical in nature, those aren't protected either.
Those are the ones that we're, I think, supposed to move over to the storage building we're not gonna have. Okay? That's, uh, that's what that's about. All right. Waste recycle facility. It's yours.
The only thing I see out there that there's nothing in here for a backhoe. And we need a backhoe out there. We had put some money out, I believe, the last time on it. We couldn't find one for that amount. I would need at least maybe forty thousand in there to find a good used backhoe. I've been checking with Case, but one hasn't came in. That'd be the only difference on repairs. If we do purchase a used backhoe, force it to use anything used, it's gonna have breakdowns. The repairs would have to go more than two thousand, maybe four thousand. We could probably go on repairs, go up to four thousand.
Any comments?
Also out there, I need, we need a riding lawnmower out there. And not, we could get the ones that, what I mean, they do like, what do you call those? Yeah, zero turn radius. Or we could get a regular one, but it would have to be anywhere between maybe twenty-five hundred and five thousand. I would like to budget five thousand for that. If we don't buy one this year, it will just go over to next year. And everything else is, everything else is fine.
How's the lawn getting those now?
By shredder tractor. The majority of the back end, but on the front, we don't have a riding lawnmower there. A lawnmower is old. We've just been making deal with what we have there.
How often does that go through?
Probably a couple of times a week. As soon as the trash starts building up, as soon as the trash starts building up in the canisters, we go over there and we smash them down. For the last few years, I've been using my backhoe from my construction company. I didn't have a problem doing it, but Judge Shaw told me that when she was here, she said that could be a liability issue using my own. And I did it mine. I would still be using it, but she said not to because it could be a liability on the county. So now that's where we've all into, we're gonna need one.
Can you get, uh, can you look into lease?
Excuse me?
Leasing a backhoe?
No, sir, I have not looked into that. I just figured we could purchase one for, usually if we purchase something with a county, we usually have it twenty, thirty years.
And that forty thousand?
Yes, ma'am. That would be a decent used one. If y'all guys agree.
I have no objection if you get to, I know you can make a trade.
It saves the county and the lawn money. Mike?
I just bought a Case backhoe, a nice used one, two thousand eight. It runs about seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, two thousand eight. I was looking for like maybe a two thousand three, two thousand four, something like that.
The only thing you gotta watch is some of this equipment after ten years, you can't buy parts. We've got some shredders from the county. They're over ten years old and we can't even fire radiator for them. They're doing makeshifts, so every ten years, you better get rid of it. And then with this death coming out, it's gonna be even worse.
How many hours does that backhoe have?
Uh, fifteen.
How much did he sell?
Seventy thousand.
About seventy thousand.
I'm going one, uh, two thousand and thirteen for sixty-five RDO. John there?
Brand new.
Well, guys, if y'all think what Mike, what Mike just said, we may have to go a little bit higher on that.
Well, what he said, man, we don't. I like this for a better.
Well, we could stay with, we could stay with the forty and try to find something underneath, but you know. I thought that was a pretty good price, but Mike made a point though.
Use one for forty, you'd have a good deal.
I didn't wanna go, I didn't wanna go too high, but if you think anything used, that's got repairs.
What about the rental fleets that they turn them back in?
Yeah, or like Maurice said, we could look into leasing one maybe.
What, four grand a month rent one? You check with RDO, that's a rental. Use purchase?
Maybe something like. Maybe we could do something like that.
We're on bond.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any? Go ahead. Anybody else have anything else? Are we? Agreement with forty thousand, four thousand maintenance or repairs, and then five for a lawnmower?
So change the two thousand repairs to four thousand?
But the only use it for is smashing down.
Yes, sir.
You're not digging up holes or anything like that.
No. And we have a bobcat there, but it does, it barely reaches in there. You can't do the same work on it.
EMS.
I had an incident over at the jail that it rolled with air control.
I got you. All right, it's all cut then. There's no button. We can do that. Constable precinct one. Constable here, I guess not. Anybody have any questions?
No, I don't.
Two and three and four, they're all almost identical.
On two, I thought I got a revised sheet somewhere.
Did he win cop sync?
Constable two, yeah, we have a revised sheet here.
What would it do him to have a cop sync?
He does more traffic control than they have.
Robert, could you or Dewayne answer the question? Donald has requested cop sync. How would that be beneficial to a constable to have cop sync access?
I don't really know the answer to that, what he's gonna look at as a benefit, but it's, it would put him to have communication, you know, run stuff inside of his vehicle, where normally he could have to, would have to run it through the dispatcher, but other than that, I don't see any other benefit to it. As far as that goes.
Can you provide y'all with the cost?
How much did he put in there?
Twenty-five hundred for a new computer and radar, sat radar.
It costs eleven thousand dollars per vehicle to equip that, we cop sync a computer and all that, so I don't know where he came up with that twenty-five hundred dollars. That may buy a computer for that vehicle, but other than that, it's not gonna buy the software or the licensing and all that.
He has license, software license for sixty-two dollar forty-eight cents.
Well, over here, he has four hundred and fifty, so that one went up twelve dollars forty-eight cents.
And that software license is not, that four hundred and sixty-two is not cop sync. That is.
Then he's gonna need internet. He's gonna need internet also.
Here we go, software license, cop sync, and right here, he has software license fee.
Right now, Sheriff, he's able to perform the functions he does by simply going through your dispatch, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
I'd say leave it at that.
Take it out?
I would.
That would just be removing the computer and the radar from his updated request. That four sixty-two forty-eight is licensing he has to have for his ticket writer software.
Okay.
Right, but over here, it has a software license fee, it has four hundred and fifty, over here, four hundred and sixty-two forty-eight. So we leave it at what, four sixty-two forty-eight?
Sheriff, I asked you, I asked you earlier, uh, are we using these constables to the maximum effort that we can use them? Other than, I know they serve your civil, your, uh, I guess your civil papers, but, and you, your deputies serve the criminal warrants and stuff like that. But are you, is there anything we can use these constables for to help you aid in your traffic and your other, other, you know, where you're short on people or?
We, we can do that, like now we have constables that will come by the office, they're doing some of the civil process. We have two of the constables that are doing that. Like precinct one, Constable Finner, he does the, the civil process at TDC there in Kennedy. And he'll do some others. But we can also use them if we ever need traffic control out in the county, or if we need anything else, we, we will call for them. And they're, you know, they can assist us also.
Seems really like what I've been trying to, probably trying to use these guys, they're constitutional departments. We have had them. And, uh, it seems like we oughta try to hook pedal metal with those guys and get them to go out there and check traffic violations. They can do something. I think a lot of times those need direction from you guys, you know, just put them, put them to work.
Yeah, and I know some.
I know it's not, you're not their boss.
Right.
I understand that, but you can maybe have joint meetings with other, or maybe they need to come with commissioners. If they want to take your direction, they'll take ours. Just, we'll just tell them, you know, we're, we expect to get a little more benefit out of it than we have in the past. And just get them, get them to take care of some things a little better. Because I know you guys got plenty to do, and so, big county, we put them to work, do the traffic or something. Any, uh, any other comments?
No.
They are elected, they are, some of them are full time, Troy, the other.
I know that. Okay. I think that's it for the constables. Does he rest back or? Come on down, Ms. Kelly. I believe you're here this morning so you know there'll be some salary adjustments made. Anything else on the proposed budget that you have? Questions about it or want to change?
Uh, most.
Okay.
Can you explain what your staffing will be? And then Mr. Gardner had a question about the VAB.
Yes, sir. The staffing, we're going to have, uh, two crews. They're gonna work forty-eight on ninety-six off. The, uh, and that'll require three crews or, well, six crews for twelve people. Six paramedics and six basics or intermediates. And that, that's our staffing plan. Yeah, and of course, all that comes down based on the, the salary changes, however they're, they're made. It basically, it comes out to thirty-four weeks. And I, I broke it down by weeks in my pay period, it's, uh, forty-hour weeks. And there's eighteen weeks where they'll have seventy-two hours on shift. Yes, sir.
In your budget, or in the budget on page twenty-one, it's got paramedics six. And the salary that you have out there is four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. If you divide that by six, it can lead to just a touch over seventy-two thousand dollars a year.
Yes, sir. Actually, the, uh, the yearly total for paramedic is, uh, on this schedule that I have, the staffing plan, uh, is actually sixty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eight cents. That extra you, you see on there, we've been a full year, so I have people that are eligible for vacation. They're eligible for sick pay. And we, we figured some holiday pay in there because those guys actually have to work on holidays. They don't get a day off. And it's not like an office position, if they're sick, I have to pay someone to come in to cover their shift. That's the extra you're seeing.
The average for an EM, I'm sorry, for a paramedic, essentially, the average pay is approximately forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollars a year. They don't fear overtime pay. This is their basic salary. My question is, I can't tell.
Can I ask a question before you say that? Is that like San Antonio Fire Department paramedics? Or is that of, of an EMS service where they only do EMS?
San Antonio Fire Department.
Because they fall under a different FLSA than we do because their primary job is to provide fire suppression. Yes, sir, because they're primarily firefighters.
Well, I can't, I can't argue that. I can tell you the paramedic in San Antonio averages about forty-eight or forty-nine thousand dollars a year. In my view, their primary function is paramedic, not firefighter. Usually they work for the fire department. Their overtime, sick pay, bike, all that stuff is a separate line item. We're just talking about their basic pay.
What did the, what did the wage survey say for this?
Twenty-one thirty-four per hour is the mid-range. Twenty-one thirty-four per hour.
With the number of hours they're working, if that comes to these numbers, we calculate.
Including, as Dennis mentioned, vacation and sick leave, et cetera, when he actually has to have another paramedic come in.
Okay.
The way this is reflected, it shows in each paramedic, each of your six paramedics, like seventy-three thousand dollars a year.
I see, I see what you're saying there.
Is that not true?
No, sir.
Nate, tell us, tell us what you mean. I mean, it's forty-eight thousand dollars a year, and then you gotta pay overtime. I mean, that's fine, no problem there. This does not reflect what their base salary is, is all I'm saying. This shows me, or tells me, the seventy-three thousand a year plus overtime or whatever. It's not a reflection of what you're actually gonna pay, your baseline.
It's a reflection of what he's gonna have to pay, but not necessarily to those individual.
That's not what this says.
Well, I mean, yeah, it does.
That's all I'm saying. Seventy-three thousand dollars a year for paramedic, probably about thirty percent, forty percent higher than the average, or even, for even a metro area.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I think what we have allocated here, based on the salary surveys, hours, is what we're gonna end up having to pay to have six paramedics on, on call. Cause I understand it. There'll be three in each shift. And those will not necessarily be the guys that get paid the money. Do you have substitute paramedics that's called upon?
I, I, I have one at this point in time, if he's not working his primary job. Victoria Fire, the, the whole premise now is, is that we, we try to all work together to cover for each other in the event that someone can't be there.
And if somebody has to be.
And if they can't be there.
They don't have to be paid overtime.
Yes. Well, not necessarily. We have to figure it in overtime because if Casey's gone and another paramedic that already works for us stays and works, it's gonna be overtime. If I can get someone in at a cheaper rate, then that's what we'll do. I would like to have all the bodies that I can have working for us part-time as they can. Because that just gives us a bigger pool of manpower if something tragic or extreme ever does happen, or when it happens.
Any other questions?
No.
We're all right? Maurice mantra. Why do we need a mantra? How exactly is the money, I just wonder why we need a mantra?
I have to respond to calls quite often, and it's becoming increasingly more and more, just where we're at right now. Fortunately, we were right here. I have to go out and help give an extra manpower. Sometimes I have to respond first because both of my trucks are busy. We have the emergency management trailer is at our office. I mean, and, and right now, I'm doing all of this with my personal truck. And the last thing that I want to have happen is to be involved in an accident in my personal vehicle, responding to an emergency call. Not to mention, we'll use it for day-to-day functions, um, you know, going to different strike meetings, things of that nature. Where right now, we're using a personal vehicle and, 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 you know, we, we need something. For one thing, if, if we'll use, uh, we'll use the vacuum service explosion out there, Supreme. I couldn't even park with my ambulances to direct them. I had to stand out in the rain because I didn't have emergency lighting on my truck. And I didn't want to call a wreck in Midland Highway or get in, in somebody else's way trying to get there.
What is the liability in the person being hit on?
You know. I've heard it all kinds of ways. I know that my insurance guy told me do not put, cause I purchased that truck when I had Texas Regional. He told me do not put emergency lighting on that truck, uh, because the insurance, my insurance will not cover it. And, and that's why I've been reluctant to do so. Especially since I'm not a volunteer. Sometimes you get to slide under the table that way, um, but when you're not, then, then they kind of frown on you. And, and I don't know as far as if I had a wreck, what the county side of things are.
Talking about the county liability on your personal vehicle. What is the county liability?
I don't know. I'm sure with the other guy, I'm not sure that I get paid.
If he is in the course and scope of his employment, uh, driving his personal vehicle or otherwise, we're gonna have liability for, for his actions. So. I don't know that that liability really increases due to the fact you're driving that your personal vehicle in that. It might expose you to additional liability. If you had a problem with your vehicle, something like that, and you were driving anyway, uh, that could cause you to spend additional problems. Yes, ma'am.
The reality is, we've got wrecks, we've got fires, we've got more catastrophes than we've ever had before. These gentlemen need to be able to do their job, they need to be able to do it appropriately and safely. His personal vehicle's not equipped for what he needs to do.
I understand.
He needs it, he needs it. I mean, no, we don't want to spend money we don't have to spend, but I think this is one area that there's no choice.
All right, any other comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
I would like to take a short break.
Just real quick before you do, when you start, okay, it's quick, because it'll save you on the police department, but I mean, the sheriff's department, right, too. When they put these salaries, couldn't they be broken down per person like the clerk's offices and stuff do? Because now on the police, on when you get to the sheriff's department, all of those people don't make the same salary. You have, they got one big clump of money over there on the right-hand side. Now you can take your break.
Thank you very much. Sorry to be here today. Okay, we're ready to proceed. Next department up is the sheriff's department. Sheriff? I guess what we're asking, are there, other than salary adjustments that can be made in accordance with the schedule of the survey? Is there anything else on your, on the sheriff's department proposed budget that you need to address? Then, then it's all you have, all right?
Tony, I mean, on the jail board, are you sure, are y'all comfortable with what the numbers y'all have for the jail food, the prison care? Cause that jail, once you open that jail up, it's gonna be a different bargain.
Right, and, and I see your point, Shelby. The county jail never closes down. We're open every day, twenty-four hours a day, you know, and I see your point. There's, you know, our, our, our process and bookings and booking, they go up, they go down. Same thing like medical. We have somebody that we, they be brought into custody and we have to take care of them. And two days later, you know, they become sick and it's a long, they have, we have to keep taking them back to the doctor. That's just, that's, that's something that we, it's the sheriff's responsibility to take care of that if there's a medical problem. And, you know, then we have the bills coming in from both ways. I know as far as our, on our medication, we work with the hospital with Indigent form where they pay three medications a month. But if there's more than three given the month, then the county has to pick up the rest of the bill. You know, and also with community out, we are seeing an increase on people that we have to be calling community out. Right now, we have two at the, at the state hospital that have been there, probably going on forty-five days. And are the, the medication that they're on, yeah, community out pays the first thirty days, and then after that, we have to, if they're still on that same medication, you know, we have to pick up the bill.
I know that, you know, we, you know, just your, I've been, I've been keeping track of the jail expenditures. And already for the year, you've almost had two-hundred-and-fifteen thou, I want to tell you, almost two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, but yet your only budget is maybe like a hundred and nine. I mean, if you broke them out and took those two people to jail, and that's what I'm kind of concerned about, make sure that we have enough. You can be comfortable with having enough. I was talking about your, like, your jail food, your prison care, your medical, and detention, transportation. I mean, that's a, that's just a shot in the dark.
Right.
We sat down and we looked at what we were currently spending versus our population going up that much, and it's, it's really gonna take about a year for us to develop a track record. It's, it's gonna be kind of a shot in the dark.
And the whole, and the whole time also during the whole process, once we start, is I think we need to look at what beds we can farm out, if we can. Because if you're having an average daily population of, I mean, daily population, say, twenty-two, thirty-two, that's gonna leave you sixteen beds. Or you can move additional people out to GIO and rent those other beds and help offset some of the costs for the jail operation. I just, maybe y'all thought about that, I don't know.
And the thing is, I don't know that contract that y'all have with GIO on the thirty beds, I don't know if that contract is up or if they're gonna have to bring it before Commissioner's support to extend it. Cause I hope, if they bring it to your attention that it, that it is, because the thirty beds over there, I mean, will.
Will don't indicate the thirty beds.
Yes.
All right, in other words, you, you can utilize the thirty beds. Alright, in other words, you, you can utilize the 30 beds. Can you, can you?
That's free.
Okay. So whatever you can rent out in your jail, uh, or whatever you can rent out in your jail, rent out some of your beds to other counties where you can stick your stuff over there in the, uh, detentions under jail.
Another, another thing that we're kinda looking at is like jail utilities, put that amount in there based on what our current stuff is. But if, once you get into that new building, it's gonna be, you know, kinda hit and miss on what that's gonna be. Look at the old jail and what we're doing now. So we're looking at overall utility cost and we try to keep that at the bare minimum and hopefully we'll be fine there. Uh, so when it comes to utilities and food and things like that, it's gonna be a, it's a hit and miss.
Have you checked with DeWitt County, don't they have a facility about the same size?
Double the size of ours.
It's twice the big?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, so we've, I've asked around, we've looked at Wilson County too, they have a bigger one also, so we've talked to them about their utilities and the medical care. Of course, we're gonna see a huge decrease in transportation and housing prisoners around. Right, one line item in there, if you'll see that we let money in there for prisoner detention because we have to pay between October and the time we take over the new facility. So there was a couple of questions about that, why we had that prisoner detention in there, but that's gonna be.
Well, if you don't use it all till December, then you can always move it to.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's kind of another shot in the dark there. And then the medical care, like the sheriff said, that's gonna go up and down. I suggest they're gonna depend upon that, so, uh, the four vehicles at the bottom, there was also some questions about that. But there, we have four vehicles that are between 160 and 190,000 in mileage, so we're gonna try to replace those. Four that are unreliable or getting to the point where they're unreliable costing more.
Do you sell them?
We just need to add a scope simply to sheriff's office after we did.
They have a public auction, the money comes back to the county, so.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
When are y'all?
Yes, sir. Either one.
When are y'all supposed to be, take access to the new jail facility?
December 5th.
December 5th has been the completion date and they're looking like they're right there. It's gonna be right within a few days of there. And then we're planning about 30 days to transition from the old one to the new. And you have to move all your 911 center, dispatch center, your teletype, your DPS equipment, all your radio antennas and all that. So we're transitioning, but we're giving it 30 days. So we're hoping mid-January, we should, we could get in there, so.
Did you read?
And also the jail commission has to license the facility, so we have to get the state here to inspect it and sign off on that. So once they issue a license, then we can move forward, so.
I have a question, Dwayne. Do the dispatcher salaries with like 297,590 dollars, what is it? How many dispatchers are there?
Do we have now? Five.
Okay, so that, that would be that divided by five.
Oh, by 10, we've asked for five additional dispatchers.
Five more dispatchers.
Because of the call volume, the.
When we go to the new facility, there's gonna be, you're gonna have two, uh, consoles, dispatch centers. We now went from LE, the law enforcement, uh, channel, and then we have fire and EMS. Right now, one dispatcher is watching, the law enforcement dispatcher and the EMS.
And all the 911.
And all the 911 calls and all the traffic that's coming through the radio, plus the phone calls that are coming in and the people that are coming in through front door. Uh, that's just ones doing it right now, so that's what we've asked for.
The reason we've been able to get by with that.
So that won't give you trouble of how many dispatchers?
10, 10 dispatchers.
I mean, two, both are all.
That's a lot. We've been able to get away with that in the past over the years because of this jail. You had a jailer and dispatcher together there, they could help each other. But now under the new facility, the jailers will have to be out on the floor away from the dispatch center so that one person, there's no way they can do two radios, you know, 911 and all the phones at the same time. So it's set up to be a two-person system. And same way with the jailers, they ask you, the jailers, we've asked for five additional jailers. The state mandates that, we have to have a inmate-to-jailer ratio that we have to follow.
And now we'll have control, uh, somebody will be letting us in as far as going from cell door to shore to cell door. Now we have the key in our pocket to get to these cells over here, but you actually have to have one jailer management control getting you in and out of the cells.
So it's gonna all be a big master center and that person will control everything that goes on in that building, so.
How many total jail, how many total jails?
There'll be 10 jailers totally under the new, once we will go to the new facility, be 10 jailers and one jail administrator. So there'll be a total of 11 jailers because the jail administrator fills in on, you know, sick time, things like that, so.
Anything else? Just this one.
Point of clarification, what's flash money?
Flash money is what we use when we have, we do narcotics interdiction and that's what we call flash money.
Where you pretend to buy from somebody?
It's just, we do narcotics, yeah, that's what we use that money.
Right, if I went up and tried, you tried to buy some narcotics from me? You had, you had handed me flash money and then you had to rest.
That's what we, yeah.
It's just a terminology.
That's the term that we use.
But that's what it.
Yes, ma'am. It's used to buy narcotics, narcotics enforcement.
If you're trying to buy a, or you're not. Exactly, I'm sorry. Can, can we get on that?
At least you're not profiling.
Yeah, it would be, we're definitely not profiling. Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Any? I think, um, everyone's on the phone. How do we have patrol departments estimate budget? I don't think we have any DPS people here. Yeah, I think it's down.
My question, when are we gonna have a DPS office back?
You're talking about driver's license officers? Uh, I don't know, I think Pete had some communications with that one time, a DPS, did you, Pete?
Well, I've had a lot of people request that we have driver's license officers. And I asked him about it and they said, well, we don't have anyone to fill the job right now. The last time I talked to one of the officers from San Antonio.
I was also gonna speak on that subject because, uh, when I took on the elections administrative position and I realized that we don't have a DPS office. And we are now requesting voter identification, it's a, it's the law for everybody to be able to vote. I thought, you know, that it would be the perfect opportunity to dig in, seek that out. But I was told also by the DPS office that they're not planning to fund a new office. It's a whole lot of extra equipment that they've gotta put in. And I mean, the only thing I can suggest is that people understand that if that's at a state level, we're, we would be happy to have them, but speak to your representatives and try and put them to push DPS.
Are they the office that issues the state IDs and ungrung?
Yes, yes.
Well, seems to me if they're gonna mandate showing your ID when you go vote, they're certainly not trying to keep people from voting, are they?
Exactly.
Another one of those state unfunded mandates.
During the last legislative session that was passed, that a county that does not have a, a driver's license office, that a county, uh, an office got, uh, Karen said, shoot, they'd be happy to do it. It was originally proposed that it would be the tax office and then they did any office that chose to do it. So I called them and they said, the guy I talked to, I've never heard of that. I'm like, oh, great. So he talked to his supervisor, he goes, oh, it's just in, it's just in baby steps. So we're looking at.
Okay, so it's not happened yet, alright.
It'll take a lot of training and he said, the first guy I talked to had never heard of it. So.
Okay. Well, there's nothing we can do about it apparently right now, other than talk to your life selection, so you would like a little service done there? Yes, sir.
Do you pay retirement interest by DPS?
She's the county employee.
That's just the clerk.
That's the clerk.
They pay for the DPS as well?
They provide them with the secretary.
The county provides their secretary and we pay all benefits on her position.
Because of all the traffic violation money comes to the county that they write tickets to Lawrence County, so they're pretty much self-supporting. Uh, award in one way. So all that, all the fines that they bring in to all those to the county except for their portion.
And, you know, the additional security they give, you know, they're usually pretty well-trained officers.
Yes.
And good to have in the county.
And they work on accidents also.
Yeah. Alright, any else on DPS?
Judge Butler, I was gonna say too, if that, if that does come to pass, if they did that license, that your, uh, office here would be strictly for renewals. It wouldn't, we wouldn't have all of the driving tests and all that, it would just be.
That's what I assume.
Right.
An eye test and all that, fingerprints, you know.
Okay. Okay. Health department. The salary that's, uh, Dr. Solanya.
Yes.
He's our county health officer. Does it for an extra nothing, I don't know how much he actually has to do, but, uh.
It's a required position to have on staff in case we have an epidemic.
Yep, I know we have to have it, but. Community rail, the budget contribution is for mental health services that, well, we get it through the community rail if we weren't and had to employ someone like that here, it would be horrendously expensive. So that's probably a good deal. Any questions on the health department? County welfare department's estimated budget, uh, indigent funeral expense, I know I encountered that one time this year where they had a call from San Antonio. Person who'd come to arrest somebody in there or something, had passed away and took them up there and, uh, we're responsible for some funeral expenses. Pretty, more of my stuff, but we did have to do that, so we need to have something in the budget for that. Uh, the senior mobile food pantry and the mobile food pantry, uh.
What is all, that's, that's up about 18,000. The, we had, we want, we wanted to add the senior mobile food pantry this year. It's for 65 and over.
Yeah.
Only, it'll be prepackaged stuff, uh, that's more quality than what they give at the normal food distribution. The regular mobile food pantry is.
We added $12,000 to it.
We, and we're trying to get a better quality of food that we get out, we, we distribute, uh, also we get, every quarter we get an additional, additional distribution. We're having one as a matter of fact tomorrow at the, at the showground and, uh. Is that the food bank? Yes, the food bank.
Got the order sent every time?
Yeah, but it's gonna be just strictly every time, it would be at the, at the showgrounds. To just, huh, the whole county. The whole county. And, uh, we've also found out that, uh, I was talking with different people, that, uh, some of the schools are, are sending food home with their kids after school. They're putting stuff in backpack, some of these kids will have something to eat when they get home, cause some of these kids go home and there are no parents or they just don't have nothing to eat. So we're trying to also look at some of this food that we get that maybe some of the kids could use. We can get, you know, route them to the school and hopefully get these kids something more to eat than, than what it is, than what they're getting. Since I've been involved with this thing, I've seen just starting out and Pete's been involved with it too, it's been a lot of, uh, it's gone like last month, I think we had like 175 cars or something like that. And, and that's a lot of people, we, you know, some people you kinda question, but, uh, nevertheless, the, it's been decided that if you show up there, we're not gonna turn anybody away. And, and we're trying to get the churches involved, trying to get more people, we can supply the needs. I know there's some people that really are struggling, you know, you might think we're just a wealthy county, but there's a lot, there's been still a lot of poverty and hunger in this county. So we're just trying to correct some of that.
Can I say something, Shelby? I just wanna say that that feed bank is probably, it's one of the single most important things in the county. It, it, it's really helped a lot of these people, cause I know I go out there and I work it and it's, it's a, it's a rewarding feeling to know that admit amongst all of the discussions and the hustle and bustle about all of the things, the topics that we have to discuss here. That, you know, we are doing some real good things out there in this county with helping these people. So I, I just urge you to please to continue to support this feed bank because it's a, it really is, it's, it's, a lot of the people are out there and, and, and it just alleviates it, it helps them just a little bit. But it, but it does services people and, and their families, so thank you for that.
This is probably the one project the county does where we actually give back to the community. Quite frankly, it's a service, it's a, something that comes back to the people.
Zane leaned against a button.
I can't see.
Alright, any else? Any other questions?
Zane, will you hit that bottom button again? Thank you. Better?
That little guy, he was smart, what he, he did it.
Next, uh, one line, I don't know, historical society estimate budget. Anybody have any questions, comments on that?
It is at that 18,000, the 15,000 was this current year's contribution, they requested 18 and that's what was put in the proposal.
They sure want a lot of that. What is that, to keep the little wagon up or what?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Well, what did you? Gotta have new cars on.
The 18, the 18,000 is used primarily for the salary of our museum curator. And now I realize you should give a raise to, for sure, because she's making less than 10,000 a year.
Oh, the lady out there.
And then up here, up the property, and we have four or five buildings in there, and we're running a house, so we have a lot of expenses. So we are fortunate that y'all contribute this, this 18,000 and then we also have contributions from the rest of the county. So I think we all work together to make that county complex, you know, as good as it can be for our county and to, you know, preserve our county history.
Any, any else? Uh, next is agri-life extension service.
It's pretty straightforward. And all it is is whatever the salaries are.
Alright.
Yeah, that's fine.
Commissioners estimate budget.
Same as last year, we didn't get no raise.
He's catching on that, right? On some other line.
I don't need a raise, I won't be getting that long.
He won't?
I'll take, I'll take half, he could.
Uh.
I have one question though.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that keeps saying that they go to Austin for this and that, why isn't there any money in there for legislative travel?
It was all combined into, uh, their conference expenses because there are some commissioners that go to more than just their mandatory 20 hours of continuing education. And instead of trying to itemize it out and segregate it between four, it's just lumped into one.
Alright, justice.
Any other comments? County human resources, this, we made a proposal sometime back to have a, an HR director. Uh, employed by the county. This is a position, it's basically been handled by the, uh, the treasurer's office. And, uh, our call, sure, I believe we actually passed a resolution to have.
Yes.
An HR director position, so this is it.
Judge Butler, I also provided in the packet this morning an update from our discussion of the combination.
Okay.
That you should have.
Let me have, uh, our.
Guess it should be that.
Alright. The way I looked at it is if we're going to have a human resources department, that person will need an assistant. And, uh. Oh, now I remember how we do this. Here's kinda how we talked about doing this. Combining the, uh, county financial office with human resources. The human resource department's primary responsibility is. The human resource department's primary responsibility is, you know, payroll, personnel issues, things of that nature. The financial officer will also have a role in payroll, as well as the other financial affairs of the county. What I thought we'd do is have that office, a single office, county financial and human resources department. The, pardon me, financial officer's salary is fixed at sixty-five thousand. The salary of the assistant, which would be a person in charge of human resources, is fixed at thirty thousand, one sixty-four eleven.
Which now would change.
It's gonna change somewhat, it's gonna change somewhat in view of our salary elevations. If we set this department up and the human resources function is in this department, I don't think the treasurer's office will need an assistant. And so that assistant will be in this office, and this office would answer to, report to the commissioner's court. Now, this is brand new position, we're gonna have some work to do to get it organized, get the right people in place, see what we do. I think this is a good move. I think we'll have a better chance of real professional treatment of our people, real professional treatment of the issues that come up regarding employees. I really don't know any business anywhere near the size of this county that functions without a dedicated human resource department, I really don't. And it's essential to properly managing your people, getting them properly evaluated, disciplined if necessary, fired if necessary, so we can upgrade our workforce. By saying upgrade the workforce doesn't necessarily mean run off people who are here and hire new ones, as to encourage, motivate, train, and educate our present workforce. And everybody who follows the suit and elevates their job performance, that's great, glad to have them. But those who won't, those who might be fixed in the old way of doing things, not wanting to upgrade their job performance, well, that is another thing entirely. So that's how I propose we resolve that issue. Any questions? All right. Pardon me. The other demand to go to that coffee shop that you gave me for a meeting. The county information technology department. This is a new department. And the aim of this department is to get more synchronized in our information and technology. You know, some counties, I guess, have people on board that are extremely techie. They're really no technology, they don't know what to do. And some of those counties will form committees of various county personnel who are very up on technology and know how to systemize and organize everything in the county. But I don't think we're one of those. And it's not an insult to anybody, I just don't think we are there. I think what we need is this. And this is another thing, all companies of the size of this county, and most counties the size of this county, have IT departments. And we want to put some money in place, and the only way this person will be able to do what they've got to do is they've got to have control of the budget. You can't have each department being, having their own budget items for computers and technology. Everything has to go through the IT department. And I think that's the best way to control spending and the organization of the IT assets of the county, is to have it go through somebody who's personally what they're doing. The salary we pay is high. We may be able to get somebody for less money, I certainly hope so, but the main thing we want to do is get somebody who's qualified. We're wasting our time if you don't get somebody qualified. Since I know so little about technology, I couldn't properly interview anybody on the subject, I'm asking our, pardon me, our IT director at our law firm, who is really, really good out of San Antonio, to come down and help me. Our lawyer wants to be involved in the interview process to interview this person. So we won't be, some guy could come in or some woman could come in and just tell me a few things that I'd think, man, they're smart. I really know what they're talking about, we can sleep both. So we don't want that. So that's within budgets, the funding of that person, as well as the funding of the various items we anticipate we're going to be purchasing. Now, as far as this issue of the title of technologies, hopefully we'll get that person in place in time to also assist in formulating a plan and reviewing bids and all that on that issue. Okay? Any questions? Yes, Judge?
I have another question. What is that sub coordination, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, and then it says, JP Tech Funds, forty-five thousand. What is that? That's coming out of our tech funds?
That would be anything related to JP's software, computers, your training that your clerks go to for the Hill Country.
Okay, so that's the street for JP's?
Correct.
We're basically trying to capture people's various budget requests for IT-related items and put them in here. It's not that you're not gonna get it, it's that they have to go through this department. Okay, just a minute.
Has housing been a consideration? We're talking about some new positions, hopefully, maybe one or two can come out.
Where will they live?
Where are they gonna live and how are they gonna pay for it?
That's a good question. I know when I taught my son into coming down here to practice law three years ago, that was the big issue he ran into, was finding a place to live. And he ended up having to buy a place up near Florisville, one of those neighborhoods out there, to find the house he wanted. And there's just nothing available down there. Now, that's one of the things, when we talk about the economic development of this county that must take place. Are we gonna just have man camps and trailer parks so that nobody wants, you know, even has the opportunity to stay here and become a permanent resident? Or we want to start doing some developments, housing developments, where people will have an opportunity to buy a nice house and want to live here? There are sure a lot of people working in this county now, I'd like to think we could get some of them to live here and contribute as citizens. Not just financially, but their intellects and their kids and everything else that goes with that, that this could help this county become better than it is. So you're right, and the only way to get that done, I guess, is through private individuals. They have properties that could be made into housing developments. Some people are willing to invest in housing developments. And of course, I've been surprised that hadn't happened more than it has. I thought there'd be any number of them around Orange County by now that would be springing up with houses, nice houses for sale, but it's been real, real slow coming. And maybe, I don't know what it is, fear that it's not gonna last or whatever.
Isn't part of it a water problem?
I'm sorry?
Isn't part of it a water problem?
No.
I don't think so.
I guess it is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Water in what way? Taste bad or what?
No. Kennedy is restricting any development because of a shortage of water.
Oh, is that right? Maybe part of the issue. And we're gonna have to... If water shortage is part of the issue, we have to develop solutions for it.
I did talk to a man with a Cameron, an oil field service company building, a big building off of Long Island. And he said, hey, you're kind of rich, can you get me some water out here? And I said, well, I think Kennedy has water line here and sewer line, and they're about to get water to this section there. And he said, well, they won't tell me anything. Kennedy won't tell them when they get the water, they build a building, I suppose. Say, how much you need? He said, fifteen hundred gallons a day. I don't know what to do, but I did tell him that when I was in Austin, I talked to a Texas Water Development Board Director, and I got the name of someone they had to give money to be loaned and for grants for water development. And I did tell them that I would get in touch with Allosa and Kennedy and Palm City to see if they wanted to drill into the Eagle for... I mean, to the Carizo Aquifer here and put in a desalination plan for desalination to fill the ground here. Palm City, it's not salted, that's why the wells are burnt. Palm City's supply and Allosa's supply are both Palm City, but here it's salty. And they have to have a desalination plan, so I talked to them about trying to get, maybe get some help from the state to get that.
It's an expensive process.
Maurice, you know, I can talk to the city of Kennedy, and some of them say they got all the water they need, you know, have ample supply, but yet we're in a restricted at this time due to the drought. I know. And I hear tell that Allosa is starting to have problems also supplying water. So that water issue is an issue.
Well, it's not just our issue. Entire state of Texas has been closing their eyes and just running through walls when it comes to water. We have not paid attention to, a good friend of mine, David Lane, for this. He's a rancher, and he got involved in checking on water issues because his wells kept dropping. There's a lot of water that kept dropping. He sends me stuff all the time, you know, various articles he's picking up and studies about water. They're pretty frightening really for the state of Texas, and we're not alone, there's other states too. There, you know, we've had these booming populations. So this state is probably a three times the number of people it did when I was a kid. And it's not stopping. And that's the big limit. And we hear about the economic miracle of Texas. We're likely to be the economic disaster of Texas if we don't develop long-term solutions for our water. Submit a camp house. And apparently, we're already hitting that cap here a little bit. I hope that's not the case. Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the housing issue with these potential candidates for employment, would it be appropriate, in an effort to truly bring in applicants that are suited for the positions, to perhaps offer a very limited per diem? Just to give them an opportunity to start to work here, and if they have to live in San Antonio, wherever until they can find a home. And by limited, I mean thirty days, sixty days, not on into eternity. But I know a number of businesses have tried to hire management and so forth, got qualified people, but couldn't keep them, because there was simply no opportunity for them to... No incentive for them to take the extra time and trouble out of their full day starting a new job to also look for a house in a market that is very restricted. Just a call.
May have to go out and rent a house or buy one. I mean, it's not, it's not like they had the money they could do it. You know, I'm not sure the money is the key issue, is where can you find a house that you'd want to live in?
More of a good faith show on the part of the county. We understand what you're gonna be up against, we think you're really qualified, we'd love to have you here. This is our show of good faith, we want to help you. We'll hook you up with Sean O'Brien or whoever, in hopes that land will magically...
And that's great, I hope we can do that. If we don't, we'll have to find a place up north, in Florisville.
You put the admin paper, you'd be surprised what we might have living already here in our county that could fill those positions. I'm sure there's some smart ones somewhere.
We don't have to get somebody from somewhere else.
I know, so maybe we've got somebody, that place the admin see.
That, oh yeah. And that would be the case, if we've got somebody who's relocated down here, be qualified for any positions, that's great. Better still.
Yep.
You know, keep the salary right here. All righty. Jury fund, proposed budget. Cut and dry. Now, let me express my ignorance. Is this a fund devoted to pay juries that serve in this county?
Correct.
Okay. All right, emergency management coordinator. And the winner is?
Do you all want to discuss it first, or?
Have to get to the... There it is.
I can go ahead and say what my proposal was to change the budget, to change the proposal.
All right. You do understand we've already talked about modifying the salaries?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so the, I had submitted to change the salaries in the, with the coordinator and with the nine-one-one addressing individual, to put the coordinator back to part-time and to put the nine-one-one addressing person back to where the salary that was promised to her when she was hired. I don't know what you want to do about the administration portion of it.
Right.
I'm at a loss there.
Well, I understand that we're going to keep all three positions at full-time. You know, when we talked to the treasurer? All three positions at full-time. We want coordination between all three positions. But I don't think we're going to make anyone other than the commissioner in precinct for the person that the answer put. So you won't have any supervisory responsibilities regarding these people?
That's wonderful.
And so, but we certainly do, I talked to Tracy, we certainly do believe that all three of these positions should coordinate. They have some interlocking, you know, details of what they do. And we're hoping to see good coordination between each of these three people and better result at the end, help each other with, when somebody needs a project done, things like that.
Judge Butler, is this the emergency management coordinator? Is this the one that they talked about in the local newspaper that's getting eighty-nine percent raise? So is this made from a part-time to a full-time?
Right, that was a misleading press statement.
This was a part-time position, if you're making it a full-time?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, when I saw that, I went, where in the... We've got an eighty-nine percent raise in this budget.
And he's not here.
And I went scouring through it.
I did email him the next day, quickly correct that.
Yeah, that was a... And I understand a joke could have picked that up, because we didn't describe it as being changed from full-time, I mean, part-time to full-time.
But is it necessary to go to full-time, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. She's been... Suzanne, I get the pleasure of receiving her calls whenever emergencies happen in the county. It's been on a regular basis, normally in the middle of the night, and... And she keeps me up with what's going on. And she's been doing a lot of trainings of the county employees and all this kind of stuff. Yes, position a few years ago, there was no need for one.
Right.
But with the number of industrial accidents that we're having, the potential for really serious problems. I mean, that deal they had out here with this vacuum company could have been really disastrous. You know, just a few additional feet of fire here and there, we could have had a real problem. And we do need someone to coordinate the response of all the various, the sheriff's department, fire departments and all the things like that to respond to these emergencies. And this is kind of like having an insurance policy. You know, there's, you know, a month or two might go by where there's really no serious incident. And then I know you have a cluster of them, you know, just right after you took the position. And so they, you don't know when they're gonna happen. If you don't have her in place, you don't have someone in place to respond to it, that's when you have a problem.
Sir, I thought the emergency management coordinator was gonna work with the sheriff's department.
Well, she coordinates with them. She's not under the sheriff's department. Sheriff?
No, she's not.
Yeah.
No.
No?
No, sir.
And we never had it that way. It's always been directed to the judge's office.
Helen, would you like to say something?
Yes, ma'am. So if we're going back under the commissioners as our supervisor, how is our budget gonna work? Is he added under one budget under Suzanne?
Well, I think that budget should handle that office. Y'all need things and we'll just have it under all three names. And y'all order what you need on all, on one sheet of paper right here. And we'll put it down. Because I'll be in charge of that until my last day and then my predecessor will take over. Okay? So that's the way I think that should work.
That we're gonna answer to you?
Yes.
Mike?
That thousand dollars that y'all have with your budget? We have a thousand dollars to go to business twice. Would you need to increase that? Or, because I know we're staying close this year.
Yeah. We'll probably work on that. Probably wouldn't hurt to increase it by one thousand, maybe put two thousand in there.
Anything else?
I know that the, the three, the special projects, I don't know if we should call it special projects anymore. He said. Because I don't know what special projects would do.
Like permutations?
Permit or something. But the 911 is, is pretty important in addressing the, with addresses and stuff. But something I'm just pointing at, the Glicks administrator didn't say, was that with 911 addressing being proprietary and there's always some, we need some way to, to help the, our 911 personnel, allow her to work addressing outside 911 to, to get to verify certain information or provide some type of new mapping system. So we could do that without the 911. I mean, just, we have, they're trying to verify addresses and, and precinct lines for stuff for voting. Yet we don't have any, either we consider using Google, Google Maps, Google Earth, we won't call it, to, to do that with or... I know because 911 cannot provide the information they need because it's, it's proprietary, right? Yeah, we're not supposed to reveal that. Reveal that. I know how we can verify some addresses. We're starting to have a problem with the two trying to, one trying to get information and one really wants to supply the information, but we can't legally.
I can tell her yes or no if they're only just in the county.
Yeah.
I can do that, but I can't give her the addresses.
I got you. But anyway, just something to think about. And also the emergency manager, not just for hazardous material spills. She needs to get involved in stuff like what happened in Runge the other day. Because anything else in the county, for the first seventy-two hours, your county's on their own. I mean, till the state will come in and help us with any type of deal. Then again, in turn, you own that incident in your city or in your county. And the county's, the emergency manager supplies emergency assistance to Kennedy, Corn City, Runge and Fall City. Who supplies whole county.
So the emergency management coordinator is on call point four-seven?
Pretty much.
Can I say that we had a skill, a team leader from the road management to dig messes and everything? I just need to tell you, they did a wonderful job of contacting us right away and staying on top of it and trying to pick up the mess coming up and keeping us informed and well informed. So thank you.
Get your phone system.
But kind of like we discussed about this reverse 911?
Yeah.
Reverse 911 gonna be under? Did that, that never went into effect? Where in case of a hurricane, you call up somebody's phone number and tell them there's a hurricane coming?
It's, that's the one.
It was discussed at one time.
We discussed it where it was a voluntary, there was a website you'd go to and you would register and you would, you could select what information you wanted to be known about. It was strictly a...
Just that iInfo or something?
It's called i, iInfo.
Yes, sir.
And it was just strictly a voluntary thing. I don't know how many people have signed up for it. I know there's been a push, still trying to get that started.
Well, I never saw it in the paper. They said they were gonna put it in the paper.
Supposed to meet with Mr. Baker this week.
That we're looking for.
But that's all a strictly a voluntary thing. I know that there's a new digital 911 system coming into play, Twila, and it'll have, maybe have that possibility of doing that. So there's a new generation of 911 coming. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Road and Bridge. Commissioner's, uh... We've been getting a lot of pushback on a thirty cent tax rate. I've been wrestling with how I could possibly reduce that rate to a level that would avoid a costly and possibly really disastrous rollback election. I know I would do all I could to see that any sort of rollback election would not succeed. But that being the case, I've been looking for a place where a large amount of tax money was going and trying to think of a substitute for that tax money that would allow us to keep this tax rate from going up to thirty cents. And at the same time, would allow adequate funding of all the county budgets. It seems to me that this is kind of the place. And my proposal would be to take the overwhelm of taxes. That's eight million, four hundred forty-three thousand, four ninety-four, seventy-six that are in our maintenance and operations. Take it out of this road budget and then instead substitute somewhere between four and five million dollars of road and bridge funds that are unencumbered. And thus significantly reducing the tax rate and at the same time, still significantly funding the road and bridge budget. And I think that may be a workable way of handling this. The, there is no other place we can make a significant difference in that tax rate. And this is the only place we can do it. The overall cut level would not be as bad as you might think. Since we could replace that eight million something with some money out of Road and Bridge's unencumbered funds that are especially Road and Bridge funds. From the commissioners, do I have any thoughts on that?
That sounds like a good idea.
What we got to do?
Well, you, well, you said four or five million?
What are, what are you saying here?
I mean, you don't have to put any of it back if you don't want to. But if we were to fund Road and Bridge at a level close to... What we would do is take out that, you see that at the top? Eight million, four hundred forty-three thousand, four ninety-four. Just take that out of the budget for estimate receipts. Then we'll also, if we're gonna lower the tax rate, we'll reduce a little bit the C ter's amount. And then we add to it unencumbered funds. And I've thought about this. I don't think unencumbered funds ought to be used for anything but capital improvements. This is capital improvement. When you're improving your roads, working on your roads in your county, it's something that I think is probably eligible for it. We, Road and Bridge total unencumbered funds is about eight or nine million dollars. And to, to put those funds to work rather than just sitting there, probably makes sense.
I did give y'all updated pages this morning that reflected the new revenue lines or allocations for Road and Bridge.
I think, uh, Road and Bridge budget total last year was something around seven million dollars.
Budget was, the budget last year was five million, five hundred ten thousand.
Plus your Road and Bridge special.
Plus the special.
Made seven point six.
Seven point six, okay.
Seven point six. And what you have is the new number now, well?
Well, if we did as you proposed at the rollback rate?
Right.
We would be looking at nineteen thousand four, excuse me, nineteen million four out of regular? And then three point nine out of special?
I don't think we can hit rollback rate and support the budget we've already gone through. We, we can come a lot closer to thirty. But we're not gonna hit rollback rate. My guess is it's maybe somewhere closer to twenty-three cents, something like that. We could recalculate that. And it's still gonna be probably twenty million bucks.
Okay, at twenty-two cents, if we adopted that tax rate, the C ter's money that would be generated would be seven point eight million.
Seven eight?
Seven eight, yeah.
And so then if you took your five out of unencumbered that you were proposing, then you'd be at thirteen plus your seventeen forty-seven is seven point seven.
Okay. So it'd be twenty million, seven hundred pounds. Mike, wait a minute. The feedback I'm getting makes me think this. That you have not been on post long enough for people to develop the confidence that investing twenty-nine, thirty million dollars with your department is yet a good idea. You may yet do that. And this is a lot of money as it is. Twenty million dollars, you'd agree that's a lot of money. And it's going to take, I think, your, your concept of how the, the department would be structured needs to be changed. And to strictly the maintenance of the roads and all the construction activities being performed by qualified contractors. I'm also hoping that we can eliminate some of the necessity of these real expensive engineering charges on some of the roads. I know that bridges and things like that, you've got to have engineering done to make sure it's done right. But it seems to me that there are a lot of miles of road in Carnes County that you can use a text spec for, what, twenty-four is that what you're trying to do, twenty-four foot?
Yeah, twenty-four.
Twenty-four foot wide with...
Twelve inch of limestone and...
Whatever limestone they want to do. And then I think maybe one of those emulsions. I talked to Mr. Underbridge about that. And he said in these areas that are heavily traveled by the oil and gas, he thought that the most economical viable alternative was to put these dust suppressants and emulsions which are about ten, twelve thousand dollars a mile down on those roads. Much cheaper than seal coating and concreteing that you talked about. Because he thought, as I was thinking, that they'd tear up, you know, those wall trucks, tear that stuff up. And you'll have to redo it anyway. And it's cheaper to redo it at twelve thousand a mile than a much higher price for the other finish. So I think that would be kind of what the commissioners would, would want to see done. I think it's what I'd like to see done and maximize the number of miles we can do and not have to create a great big road department and buy this expensive property and do all those things to accomplish it. And your charge would be something different. You'd now be in charge of getting the right contractors, putting together those specs that are needed for these roads and, and, you know, working those contractors, make sure they're doing everything right. I know you're capable of doing that. And so I think, to me, that for, that makes more sense. I think we're gonna see more immediate results doing it that way than we would if we try to develop a huge department and, and do all this work in advance. But that's just my thing. Commissioners, y'all have any input?
Paul would like to hear from Mike to see what...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with you, the contractors. No, don't get me wrong. The thing is, we gotta make sure that when we get a contractor, you gotta get it engineered because for one, it's gotta be apples for apples. If I forget to tell them grid, well, then we got a lawsuit on our hands. You gotta make sure you're apples for apples. And then you're also gonna have to have an inspector that knows what they're doing on the job the whole day. Well, the engineering firm supplies that too. We don't have nobody at Road and Bridge that knows anything about inspecting density, your MC-30 for your primers. We don't have nobody there that's actually had to do with it because all we've ever done was blade roads. We just need to make sure, and I, like I said, I don't have no problem with it. We need to make sure we got qualified people inspecting the job. And we need to make sure we're apples for apples. We go with twelve inch limestone with grid, that's perfect. That, right now, I have a company held in V out of Corpus, an engineering firm that did a job for one forty-five on the south end of town. Same thing that I've been proposing, they engineered it for our job. And there's gonna be a big old plant or something back up in there. But anyway, same thing that I've been telling you. I don't have a problem with it. We just gotta make sure we got the qualified people inspecting it. Because if we lose one truck, we lost probably twelve inches of the tier.
I understand you're gonna have to have a job inspector. I also understand we don't have somebody capable of doing that in your department. Now, yourself included, correct?
Oh, yeah. I, I could do it, but I can't be at five contractors at the same time in this one county.
I understand. I guess what I was referring to is not supervising what's going to be done is creating specs for every, every job. I think that text has specs that would be more than adequate for what you want to do that you can utilize without having an engineering firm hired to provide the specs. Once you get those specs done for a road, that is the apples for apples. The contractors will be bidding on your specs. You know, that you want done. And you will have, you know, whatever kind of special requirements, it would be well worthwhile before we spend twenty-one million dollars on this road. Let's get an experienced heavy road or heavy highway construction attorney to look at your contract with these people. Make sure we got the right kind of provisions in there so that those specs can be enforced and we can get it done that way.
How do you want to go about inspecting though? How are we gonna hire?
Well, we'll have to hire somebody to do it. I mean, I'm not saying there's no engineer giving... I mean, I'm not saying there's no engineer giving you need for anything. I was just saying, we may not need an engineer to design every road.
Right, right, right.
You know, and that would be, that would be a pretty big cost saving if we can do that.
Because like I say, what we're up against, we just need to make sure that, because we'll have, hopefully, what I'm planning is three twenty-six will be kicked off, then about a month later, hopefully, one ninety-nine, and then after that, we'll have one eighty-two. We'll have all three contracts going at one time, and then we're going to start...
Those are your seventeen forty-seven?
Yeah, seventeen forty-seven, yes. And then after that, I'm going to give it each commissioner, and we're going to sit back and decide which roads that we want to do in their precinct, and we're going to split that money into each precinct, and then we'll go off of that. Well, that's another four inspectors we're going to have to have for those. So you're looking at seven people, or we could get one to travel each job, but that's what we're looking at.
We will figure out the best way to do that. And I think the commissioners, who in some counties still basically serve as road commissioners, they used to be called that, you know, since we went to the unit system, they've been less involved in the day-to-day dealings of Roden Bridge Department. But I think it's so critical at this point in time that commissioners' court needs to meet with you on a regular basis to discuss what kind of specs I want to use, how to go, what kind of issues we're going to have with bidding the contract, how do we get the roads inspected, all the things you're talking about. I think everybody needs to be involved in that on a regular basis, and we'll have to figure out how we can do that without violating open meetings acts, but I mean, I really think we need to have sessions. And one thing, the unit system provided that nobody wants to have whatever advantage it is go away, is this division of money exactly, and everything having to take place in each precinct at the same time and all that. I think you still, you still need to have a unified staging approach to it, so maybe you don't have to have four contractors out there at one time. You know, you may not be able to handle but one or two jobs at a time, and if it's not in my precinct this time, it will be several months from now.
All day we've got to watch, we've got to make sure we spend the money within the year.
I'm sorry?
You've just got to make sure the money is spent within the year.
I do understand that, and use your budget, we want you to use it. And, but that was one of the complaints that Eric O'Pial had yesterday, he said he didn't think they could spend that money efficiently as much as it was. Or we can reduce it somewhat, but it's still going to be a challenge for you to efficiently spend that much money out of a lot of cash.
Well, it spends fast.
And, well, I know it does, but we don't want to spend fast as much as well.
Yes.
All right?
We want to spend well, yes.
Now, I guess the question is on the, the amount of unencumbered funds you guys are willing to invest in it. Well, on one skin, what were those numbers for Roden Bridge, there were two numbers you gave me?
What I can give you now is I figured it at a twenty-three cent tax rate, the SERC's money would come up to eight million, one hundred and sixty thousand, three seventy-seven, fifty-eight. We would use a total of five million dollars of unencumbered funds, three from regular and two from special. The Senate bill seventeen forty-seven money, seven point seven million. Plus then we have other anticipated revenues of one point one oh three.
And then special Roden Bridge tax?
Then we have the special Roden Bridge tax of one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, two fifty-nine, ninety-five. So we'd be looking at having available twenty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six thirty-seven, fifty-three.
What was that number again?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, nine thirty-eight, six thirty-seven, fifty-three.
And I can just about guarantee that no other department of Carnes County in the history of the county has ever had anything like a budget like that, Mike. And we're going to absolutely expect great performance out of that money.
We get it.
All right?
We get it.
And, yes.
I have a second question.
Sure.
Are we to expect that roads that are not heavily trafficked by the oil and gas industry, which are, I think, a good number of them out there, are we expected to expect that they're supposed to get the same treatment as the ones that get the high road traffic? When you, when you set that standard, because I know with the seventeen forty-seven, you keep talking about that seven point seven million dollars, and we're only going to add approximately ten to fifteen miles worth of roads done with that, unless we change those standards?
My, my plan is that we will, that was a, I guess you'd call it kind of a roll rush road. And if we had the money to just put it all over the county, we could do that with a rollback decision, all the other resistance we'd meet, I'd be all for it, but I'm afraid that's not going to happen. So what I'm proposing is that we have high quality gravel roads, limestone based roads, with seal put on top of them, reapplied as needed. On the areas like where you guys are, you don't have heavy oil field traffic, one time will probably last a pretty long time, a good for around seven thousand passes, something like that. I can think of days when that would have taken care of County Road one eighty-nine for a long time, but not anymore. But I am suggesting that all the roads be taken care of that way, with some special exceptions perhaps. I don't know what they'd be, but along the east roads, and I'm just, like I said, I'm skeptical after seeing them so many years, I'm afraid this is getting beat up in there with push pavement. I guess if you have concrete that thick, it might last, but maybe not.
Stay hard away from any of them.
Yeah, you see tremendously pinched roadway has been torn up in shreds in a very short period of time. And so, but as far as allocation of resources, I think all roads in need of repair, whether it be an area that is, is or is not being affected directly by oil and gas, need to be prioritized. And all of them, I don't want to just, because that would, everything south of seventy-two basically wouldn't get much attention of us, right? And so I want to make sure that they're all prioritized, and I'm sure the commissioners, if we grab the bull by the horns, so to speak, and get proactive in the road business again, it's too easy to set up this unit system and just pass everything off to the administrator of that department and not give them any help or any guidance. You know, we're spending a tremendous sum of county money to make sure it's done right. And I think that's going to be the challenge for the commissioners too.
I agree, Judge, but you know, there's some roads that, I guess, there was some bad decisions made in years prior, and some paved roads were just plowed up, and we need to make sure we restate those roads to what they were. And in some of these roads, when there is no traffic, we need to make sure, see what we can do to, to make those roads less, roads needing maintenance over time to free you up to do other things.
And then maybe Mike has a plan, respect for roads that he's using on the seventeen forty-sevens. And I think for future uses, we will be able to analyze how those things hold up, you know, see how they hold up, where you're putting them, if they hold up there, it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty, a pretty tall task, so let's see. It may turn out that that's a worthwhile investment. Do it that way, but the problem with doing it that way is you get so few miles out of the best, the good, the good roads, I'm sure, be good. Put it in front of your place, and put it last for, but unless all drugs start turning out anyway. But I think what I'd like to see is just as many miles of good limestone based road with that dust suppressing emulsion put on top of it, re-treated as needed, as we can do every year, and see if we can go about whipping the road front.
So maybe eighteen or fifteen miles would be set at seventeen forty-seven instead of four hundred and fifty thousand a mile that was...
The four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an engineering bid, and I'm sure you all seen that on that, where the crane crushed through the bridge. It's just a number that's estimated out there, just like the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was the engineering bid, and we had that one company come in, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. But if you had the other company come in, seventy-five thousand. It's just a number that gives them the cost, more or less, of what the engineers figure that's going to take to fix them. That is not saying it's going to cost X amount of dollars to do it. And then what happens is, it all depends. You get one from San Antonio, Austin, you're going to pay mobilization. You get one locally, yeah, we got Hunter, Indian Roads, we got all them sitting here right now. Hey, these guys don't have to move, heck, they can jump in, chop that place down there. AVN out of Pearl, two hundred and fifty thousand, blue finished off, this is special road over there, you whip it up, chip seal in there, that aren't to worry about. Twelve inches of grid, same thing that we've been proposing, same thing text out specs, it's all the same. The thing is, you've got to have a dollar figure out there so everybody can bid off that dollar figure. If you don't have that dollar figure, you're shooting in the wind. You've got to have a start price, and that's where the start price was, and we've seen that, and I don't think we've ever seen it here. I've seen it a lot of text out, never seen it here, where all it is, is a number to make sure that we're telling you, this is what you could build, because you can go buy grids of ten star or whoever, and you can get it cheap prices. So it all goes by who you purchase from. Some, we'll give you a quick example, some people might buy a billion yards of limestone, well, they're going to get a better price than somebody that buys a thousand. That's kind of what it is. It's just a number, seventeen forty-seven, that's what it says, we're going to pay three hundred, or four hundred and fifty thousand. Text out wants a number, you have to give them the number, and it's an empty year number. AVN out of Pearl said three hundred and fifty thousand, I think I got to share that with the judge. You know, right there you say one hundred thousand dollars, really, doing the same part, and we've seen that on a bid, and that's chip seal. So that'd be a road that don't have to worry about dust, won't have to go to the bowl, and maybe do a little bit of sanding, that's it. But that's what we need to get to, is settle this dust, chip seal, do whatever you've got to do. But we've got to start somewhere, because I'm like the rest of y'all, I see that dust blow away every day, and it's a waste of money.
Mike, have you tried to lock in prices for six months of your road?
I got with C-Mix, and that's, that's, I think we ran into that issue last time, when I tried buying the material and letting the contractor do it, we couldn't do that, and that's the whole thing. See, D-Wick County did it, don't ask me how they did it, but the county bought the material and did everything, the contractors come and did all the lifting, and I don't know how they did it or whatever, I don't know nothing about that, but...
And your staffing, you can have, you know, you've got, you know, this conversation I've had with you, you've got, you know, you yourself and your two foremen, some of your people that really aren't, they're just more administrative than anything.
Right.
It takes away from your working manpower, so...
Yes, and I asked for fifteen people just to keep everything going until these contracts start. Once they start, we're going. I've got nutrition, I've got guys fixing to retire here pretty quick, a lot of knowledge out the door, but I need somebody that's already trained and knows what's going on so we can keep going versus me having to train them. And right now, I can't sit there and say I can even fill half of this part.
You have two spots that were budgeted last year that you never filled, right?
Yes, yes, we went in there and we found it.
I think what we're proposing is, we'll give you those two spots for this year's budget. You understand you're going to be getting some salary adjustments, should help you find people. But as far as getting fifteen today's sort of people, I don't think there's any need for that.
Well, I mean, that's fine.
I don't think fifteen, I thought maybe five, yeah.
I'd take anything.
You know, minimum five.
Because see, what it is now...
At least a lot of the positions, maybe not hire five, but have those positions there in case you would need them.
See, the whole issue comes up now is you've got to have flagmen. So if I got three blades rolling out there with rollers and everything, that's six flagmen I got to get out there.
Well, the contractors will run it there...
No, no, that's just our routine, routine blading, that's, that's not contract...
Were you talking about Ben, I was there, I got it.
Just routine blade, that's, that's not including contract, they supply everything. That's just our routine blading, and we've already had an accident out there, and we've had close calls. These trucks drive sixty miles an hour down the road, but, you know, we can stop them, we try everything we can, and, you know...
You got them, them lining signs up there and they still drive sixty?
And they still drive, yeah, it's just like the highways, you've got seventy and they drive eighty. I mean, until they get caught and they get their hands slapped, I'm in the process of putting all the speed limit signs up, and I can't even do that because I take my poor sign man out and send it bottling or mowing or stuff like that, you know? I need to finish this whole process, and we've been dragging this on forever. Once that's done, then we're good to go, but until we get to that point.
So how many do you think you need, Mike? You're actually the one that's out there doing it too.
I'll tell you, I, I need ten, but I mean, I'll take five. Right now, I take anything, because I need hands, I need flagmen, I need everything. But it's up to y'all.
Anything you can tell me, Mike?
I have twenty, twenty-six, but two of them I got open, and they're equipment operators. But by the time you take your sign man, your mechanic, your office manager, your two foremen's out of there, and then myself, you're down, and then they're split. I've got one crew is north of eighty, and one crew is south of eighty.
I thought when they had the, right, meeting that we had, it was said that you had fourteen employees at that meeting, Roden Bridge, and now we're here and you have twenty...
Fourteen, no, that's fourteen working. Take it out the administrative, support group. I got twenty-six, but you take out the support group, which is your secretary, myself, Homer, you know...
I'm thinking about men that work on the roads.
We got probably fourteen, give or take, and that leaves seven over there, seven here.
That's, that's...
But it has more budgeted than that, it just doesn't have the positions, so...
Well, I mean, we've discussed the amount of money we're getting.
Well, what I did was, I figured if I wasn't going to get that many employees, I don't need some of the equipment that I had purchased, and I cut the equipment cost back to about six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I cut it off the budget. And what we were going to do was, we were going to get the chip spreader and start chip sealing and everything else. But we took that out, we took the mowers out, because we're going to contract mowing out. Uh, I, what else did I take? Oh, I took the new dump trucks, we're going to buy new dump trucks, we're going to replace the tannins we got that we've been spending about, phew, fortunate to keep that thing even running. So I want to replace them with new, not add to the course, just replace what I have. And I've got a vacuum truck because I need water, and we're paying a thousand dollars a day plus water for a contractor to bring us water. So what we're looking at is I could pay the truck off properly in about a year and a half, and then it's free charge, and that's a vacuum truck like you see running up and down the road. And I was looking at buying an extra tank, putting a wet kit on one of our haul trucks, but there again, I don't have the drivers to drive these, so the same scenario, the equipment's sitting, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. I don't want nothing sitting, but I don't have nobody to run it. And we'll call it May, June, July, August. My biggest issue is dust. We can put the dust suppressant like the judge said, but if you talk to any of them boys, you don't put it down once, put it out three times. So that's thirty-six thousand dollars a mile that you're looking at, we could chip seal for about that cost. So, you know, that's something real good, and most of them will tell you, it's only good for nine thousand passes, and that's it. Then you do it again, but when you put it down, you cannot blade the road. If you blade the road, you got to come back and do it all over again. So either you're going to stay with rough roads or not dusty roads. You've got to make your choice on what you want, but either way, you're looking at it, you're going to have a little issue with it. And I get phone calls like you, unbelievable, you need to come water my road, or you need to come blade it. But if I just put twelve thousand dollars down on that road, I'm not going to blade it, because I know I'll hear a earful on that. So we've got to think how we want to do it. My personal opinion, like I said, and that's fine, chip seal it, and we're done. But, you know, y'all have to make that decision.
That's what you're doing on the fifteen miles or whatever it is, you're doing under seventeen forty-seven? That's what you're doing, on the fifteen miles or whatever it is, you're doing seventeen forty-seven for seven and a half million dollars?
Yes, it's, it's total turnkey.
So.
What do you mean total?
Seven and a half million dollars a year, we can get fifteen more miles of road out of five hundred we have, right?
Now, we gotta remember, we figured out at four hundred and fifty thousand, you could get it cheaper and get extra mileage out of it. But it's the same scenario.
I don't understand what you're saying. Is it gonna, are we only gonna get whatever it is, fifteen miles of road for this seven million, or are we gonna get a lot more and that number doesn't mean anything?
It depends on what the contractor bids. If the contractor bids under four hundred and fifty thousand, if it's two hundred thousand, well, you got a lot of money, you can keep on going.
What are the specifications? That's what they bid on.
That's what they're doing right now.
But what are they? Are they, is it limestone and chip seal, or is it, is it that, that material you get the Portland mixing in with there?
No, what we're doing right now is, we're going with twelve inches of limestone. And we're talking grid, and we've got, I don't know if y'all agree with. Well, yeah, well, this one here, they needed the, the three roads, and we gave twenty roads that uh, text ops put out there that's supposed to have all this heavy danger traffic, but we don't wanna sit on these three roads, blade, blade, blade. Or putting water out because we have people that call constantly that these trucks are done. So what we got is, was put twelve inches of grid and two cores, what I wanted to do.
What's the definition of grid?
Yeah.
Grid is, you remember the six-pack rings, similar to it, polyurethane, but it's sixteen feet wide, a hundred foot long. When you put this down, it's supposed to make up four, six inches of limestone. And D-Wick County's using it everywhere, and I know we all go to D-Wick, but they were doing it, we went and looked at it. The only problem is, and I tell you, they have a lot of young boys because there ain't no way all of us are getting up off our ground to get that. Because you gotta roll it out, you gotta tie it up.
They're in a contract, yeah.
It's all contracted out, yes, yes, this whole thing, and then we've got culverts, every covert's gotta be replaced in this thing. Because you're not gonna build this road and have junk underneath it, you're gonna do it right. I don't wanna go back and here we spend all this money on the road, then you see with the backhoe opening it up, I know nobody here would like to see it. So we're gonna do turnkey jobs, do everything right, open ditches, everything. So it might come out pretty close to that.
So, so it's twelve inches of limestone, then the grid?
No, no, the grid goes on the box.
And then the limestone, when they want some.
The grid keeps it from spreading.
Right.
You got twelve inches of limestone, and then you got two cores of limestone, chip seal is what's gonna go on top of the limestone. And the reason why you do a two cores, because the first one you do, it might fish eye, if you paint bottom man or cement, you catch a little dirt in the road, and then you got a hole. But the second cores would take two layers.
Two layers of tar and brown.
Exactly, exactly.
That's true.
That's chip seal, yeah. Just what they do at preservation on these roads, that's what they do.
Right, so they're running forty-four years ago, and they get it one layer, then pull it off, it's a prison, and they're called, they're not, you did it, and it's two layers, and it helps.
And it helps, and that's the thing, you gotta do two layers, doing one, you're gonna be shooting in the wind.
The problem is, it's not necessarily on roads that don't have that type of traffic.
That's exactly right.
You don't need the grid, you do use the twelve inches of limestone and the chip seal, but you don't need the grid. Because you don't have the heavy traffic that the police.
But it would make more sense to do the chip seal at twenty thousand versus grid sealing and resealing and resealing at thirty-six thousand.
With the dust suppressant, yes.
On our road, you could do six inches of limestone, chip one layer, chip seal, that probably lasts for one year.
Yeah.
Same, same, same way with the hauls road, because they got good material there, if you just top it with six inches.
Yeah.
It just, just needs that chip seal put on it mainly.
Well, that's like uh, three twenty-six, you've got a good solid layered base, look how many rigs went there, and it never pushed, never opened up. But you put the limestone and you seal it, and what that does is, it won't stick to what you have. Because the first hole you get, it crumbles, that's what this base does.
Well, a lot of the limestone that you've placed, to me, you could, you know, go back in there and reset it up and, you know, and start chip sealing.
But that's what I have planned for next year. What I did on my bottom roads, the sixty-four miles, give or take, that's what my next year, well, just budget right here we're doing, go back and seal what I got so I don't lose that.
Because a lot of the stuff that's, again, where there's less oilfield traffic, again, I, I already think you need to look at going in there and and commissioners, I don't know how you out there, you may have some roads the same way, that aren't really affected so much by the oil traffic. But you go in there and you can maybe pave these roads, and, and you're through with them, other than maintaining the, the shredding and, and the drainage should always be there, and, you know, and some of my road, these roads may not have to be twenty-four feet wide.
Yes, sir, because not all of them will make twenty-four.
Because they're not traffic, or some places, the, the right of way is not, is not there to allow that.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that when two vehicles pass, one doesn't have to sit in the ditch after it rained and get stuck. So I wanna make sure it's widened up, and like you say, you can make it twenty foot, save a foot and move it further down.
But you're gonna have to start deciding, or, or getting with somebody and setting up your specification that you think you're gonna have to have for high-traffic roads and low-traffic roads.
Right.
And then, and that's how we'll, we'll end up, you know, doing, that'll set the precedence from here on out. If, you know, and then come back with another plan for rehabbing these roads as you go.
Yeah.
That include, you know, some may take five years, but there's gotta be a program somewhere where you go back and re, and main, maintain some of these roads that you would chip seal.
Yeah, you gotta go back every five years, you got a program where every five years you go back and do a single course, you don't have to do your double. You do a single and test it out.
I'd like to see the schedule set up with a calendar type thing where January to February, April, we're gonna do this much on what, what road, so we kinda know where we're at. And then just move it on continuously and come back full circle.
That's what we're looking at, but I need to know how many men I'm gonna have in order for me to keep going, because while the construction's going on, I still got maintenance, a lot of maintenance. I gotta have a contractor come in and replace culverts, because there's tons of culverts, for one, they're too narrow, and then I have some that's got holes in the middle. Two-eleven's torn up to pots, every covert's gotta be replaced on that one. Uh, I gotta add limestone on that road, you know, that, that, there's just so much out there.
Are you gonna start using culverts more, or are you gonna start using boxes? Because what happened, these culverts are just targets to crush.
Yes, uh, what it is, is we've gotta get set up with a contractor and see what the cost of a concrete covert, I'd rather use concrete and end it because you never, ever have to open up your road and mess with concrete again. Culverts, they rust out, one-twenty-two's an example. First rain we got, the covert washed out, and we had six inches of base, and we had fifteen feet straight down underneath it. We don't need that. Plus, we're finding a bunch of areas where it's undercutting, and there's a hole twelve inches of diameter on top. And then when we go out there and we poke it, there's actually a six-foot hole underneath there. The only thing that's been standing is the base, and all that material has gone through the culverts and washed down the creek.
So this priority list is gonna be what? The list, or are we gonna revise this list?
No, that, that's, that's there, that, that's there. But that's turnkey, that's culverts, everything, if you wanna go concrete, that's the time to do it.
And right, right?
Oh, and then we have that bridge too that we're working on.
Because we got a weather factor to consider, we don't have any game, do much of that.
That's right. You got mother nature against you, you got all kinds of things against you. But thing is, we gotta start somewhere.
That's right.
You know, that's the key thing, we gotta start, gotta move on. It's gonna be a slow process, five hundred seventy-two miles of road.
I think we're, we gotta know what financing we're available, and Mike's gonna have to work with us, we can make line item changes. I think what we oughta do is go with the modified proposed budget, and then you, you guys as commissioners, gonna have to work with Mike and determine how you want these roads done, uh, and what order, that kinda thing, and I think I would pay real close attention to how these roads done the way Mike wants them done, or seventeen forty-seven, how are they gonna hold up? Will they end up costing? Yeah, I thought we knew the cost, but apparently it could be better than that. Uh, whatever that ends up being. I think, Mike, you oughta try, some of that dust suppressing emulsion. And see, yeah, because here's the deal, all right, let's say if it costs thirty-six to seal coat a road, and it costs twelve to coat it. And it's, it's a good road if it's coated, and it's a good road if it's seal coated. What happens after, if it's in a heavy area, a heavy traffic area, what happens after a year? In words, if you have to seal coat it two or three times in that year, well, not seal coat it, put dust suppressant down two or three extra times in a year. What if, uh, what if that seal coated road breaks up after a few months too, starts doing the same kinda thing? I don't know if it would, it seems to me like it might, and so I wanna kinda feel our way through this thing as we go by and, and uh, be cautious in what plan we adopt right away.
Why not try some of the old way and some of the other?
Exactly.
That's a good idea, kind of testing.
Keep a god figure on both of them.
Testing, see how they do. I'm pretty sure low-traffic areas, you can put down seal coat roads that probably last for years without a lot of maintenance problems. And you can put down the emulsion covered road for a long period of time without maintenance problems too, because it doesn't get that much traffic. Uh, I think we just gotta, we all gotta think about this stuff and how, how we want it done, and uh, that's gonna be decided by one new commissioner and one new county judge, and uh, I figure we're gonna stay up. With likes and biases and consent.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is, is, and we'll test it, I'm gonna put it on, say, a certain road. But I won't be able to blade that road, and then I'm gonna monitor the complaints on that road versus the cost of putting it down. And then that way, we have something there, because you can't put it down in January and then go blade it in February.
I realize that.
Yeah.
I would hope there would be roads out there done with this emulsion part that you're talking about. And I would hope that you could call somebody up there in the county jail and see if they can, I mean, it's so successful. I mean, why didn't text ops?
We have, yeah.
Why isn't, why isn't Goliath B. Bill, D-Wick, I mean, I, I don't know anybody who's. And, and I mean, I was, I looked at it like I told you ten years ago, when I did three miles of, you know, soil deck developed, I opened Iraq, Afghanistan, Daniels helicopter going, and I'm sure it's evolved since then, but uh.
There's one that's been developed, it's been sold by one of the major oil companies, that came into my office the other day in Lake Ness, North Carolina.
Pennzoil?
I think it depends on.
Rickhouse?
And uh, you know, I don't, I just think all options that we looked at before we decided. And, and Mike, I came to that conclusion the, the other day, and you may have just missed, but when we had a meeting, you said your intention was to every road in the county the same way. Uh, that worried me a little bit, that, that we weren't studying the individual roads, what their use patterns are, or what, or what happened to them. And I think we do need to, to do that before we commit to one-way, R and A.
Well, the reason why I said that, because we don't know where the oil traffic's gonna be tomorrow. I could go to the hauls road, not do nothing to it, then guess what, there's four rigs sitting there. We don't know, I don't know.
If there's four rigs in there, I'll face my own.
I was out on that, where did it?
I don't know that, when you start seeing the commodities prices, you see natural gas go around ten dollars an acre, look out the south side. But right now, as long as the gas prices stay where they are, and it's
Not gonna happen.
I, I don't think it's gonna be going up and end up sending as much new shale play as, or as producing as much gas. But anyway, I hope you're right. I hope it more than better.
And a lot of the two, maybe we'll be able to manage the traffic on these roads where we can divert them from using this one road all the time. Because some of these roads, you just cut across shorty roads, and they're just tearing the heck out of them.
That's what I'm trying to do to three twenty-six, and it ain't working, because text ops won't work with us.
But.
That creek.
Yeah, but like I, I was telling a guy the other day on that, doing that bridge out there on two ninety. He said, this, the company man was telling me that next year they're planning to put five hundred, his company's gonna put in five hundred wells. Now.
That part is.
So they know where they wanna put them, so we need to go talk to them to find out where the traffic is gonna be, and try to, okay, you need to help us so we can help you.
Yeah, and see, and that's where more or less this was developed out of, for text ops, because of the railroad division. That's kinda where the plan came from.
Seventeen forty-seven probably ended up being modified, because there's talk right now that about the, you know, these pass-through counties that got all this money, they're looking at maybe doing something different where now they're, for more affected counties than, than what in, within the Eagle Ford, so, and a permanent base.
Hopefully.
My, my main thing I need right now is, I need to know if I can have men to just continue my everyday duties.
Mike.
That's where my issue is.
You're, you're, you're certainly gonna get two more men, you've already been, they've been on your budget for a long time, you haven't filled it. And then if you needed additional ones, you're gonna have to make adjustments, or recommended adjustments, come in, you'll ask for line item amendments to change from payment for materials and contractors, instead of that, you want more men.
Well, that's why I took out, that's why I took out the equipment, that gave six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to back into my budget.
I think there's a big adjustment in there, in my opinion, which probably worked a lot, but he has a hundred thousand in there for signs. I don't, I don't see that we need a hundred thousand dollars for the signs on the county road, why can't you transfer that over to some employees if you need it?
Well, we're not finished with our thirty-dollar signs, we ain't got no curb signs, we don't have no stop signs.
Well.
Well, the, the legal aspect of it, I have to have some, somebody runs a stop sign, runs a stop on the thing there.
That is, is that something that people contract for too, so you don't have to hire full-time sign techs?
Oh, I ain't hiring a full-time, I already got, I'm just leaving it like that. I gotta use a laborer to help him.
Well, we just don't have nobody out there to handle it.
Yeah.
And those points, putting signs up, if we ain't got nobody out there, it's not gonna work.
Exactly. All right, well, folks, I think we're gonna talk this from the, as I understand, are we getting agreement on that money?
Yes.
Okay, Jared, one thing, out of the money that you were saying was twenty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-eight, six thirty-seven, point fifty-three, is that what you said? Um, out of that, you're saying that if Mike needs more men, he can move around the money to get more men, but that's gonna be the amount for the bridge?
Yes.
He would have to come to court and ask court for approval to move that money.
Right, or he asks you guys, I wanna follow line item amendment, it's not an emergency, he can do it. Uh, but he'll come to court and ask for a line item amendment saying, I wanna take sixty-five thousand dollars out of this uh, contractor and materials fund and hire two new guys, you know, something like that.
Well, my, my, my opinion is, we're sitting at, right here right now, and he's a man out there that's doing the nine-nine-five over here, so he should know what he needs, and we could get it done now.
Yeah, because I got six hundred and sixty-five thousand I cut from my equipment, and which is already in my budget.
Mike, you know that, you know that you need some men, if you want a man that comes in there, you wanna hire.
Yes, sir.
So if we let you, say, today you start your budget with six men, you get six men hired, then you come to us and say, change your budget to get some more?
No.
No?
I think I'll be good, because for one, nutrition will take over, for two, I'll be doing just maintenance. I won't do the actual construction. A lot of that's gonna be carried out with contractors.
So if we, if you leave in there for six men, you think you gotta take care of it?
That, that, that'll help me a lot.
Are you doing six laborers?
I could be laborers, yes, because I've got two operators.
Does that include the two you've already got?
Well, I got one of them just quit, and I got one that I got open right now.
The two positions that are open that were not included in the original proposed budget was one laborer and one equipment operator.
And they're in the revise.
They will be, yes.
And he wants four more than that.
You want four or six more than that?
I think six more than what's that.
Let me clarify one thing, the numbers that you're looking at, Mike, were at the thirty cent tax rate. You're not gonna have that twenty-three million for road materials, contractors, equipment, et cetera. It will drop down to sixteen-seven right now, without going back and recalculating the salaries at midpoint. That's gonna take more out of that sixteen million for materials and contracting and equipment, as you said. So what's, needs to be decided is, what's more important? Materials for the roads, contractors to take care of the roads, or equipment, or six additional people?
Well, see, the equipment ain't there, I'm just gonna replace the old stuff I got.
But that comes out of this money.
Right, and what I'm gonna do is trade that in, to get whatever I can, which that's gonna save the budget a little bit. But what I'm looking at, I But what I'm looking at is I get away with a whole bunch of it.
Right. I understand that, but what you have to work with, your slush fund, for lack of a better term right now, is $16 million, not 23 million that it used to be.
Yep. And me, as far as I care, people need the maintenance out there. And we got to take it out this year and then we can add it next year, we can go next year, but we need to give them what they pay for. And Georgia cane, 20 feet holes in the culverts, we can't do that. And I need to get that going until the contractors come on board. But then nutrition takes over, so that's where we're looking. Once they start retiring, I don't need to replace them. And I'm not planning on coming back next year to get any more. Thing is, I think what I've got, if you give me six more right now, that'll give me 32 employees and I think I can make it work with 32 employees.
Well, some of, some of the biggest complaints are the roads. I get them all the time, I'm sure they do too. And this is our time that we can help out right here, right now. So if we only have 16 minutes to work with, this is what, what we're here for, to make that decision. We can put maybe some more in there to cover those other six employees. Because the most important thing is the safety of the people.
And that's what I look at, the safety of the people.
So this is when we're going to do it, this is when we can do it. And this is the complaint I get every day about the roads. I mean, that's, you know, if you think six more would do it because of two you have, you're the one that's doing it, you're the one that's up there.
And six more would basically give you my flagman out there, so this way we don't get rear ended, we won't have it.
So people will be safe, the public and their employees.
Right. That's right. Because when they go down the road, they don't know what's up there. They don't know when that roller's going to turn around or that blade's going to turn around and stop. I need somebody that can control two-way traffic to where it's a one-lane road. But now's the time to do it. If we're going to do it.
You know you need them, you know you're probably going to come back and do it. And so why do it when we can knock it out of here?
Okay, if he hires six laborers at the midpoint salary range without anything, just the salary itself, that's $171,510.72. That then includes social security, health, life, retirement, long-term disability, workers' comp, that includes none of that. So you're probably looking, you know, another 35% on top of that.
Mike, what are all these people doing that are administrative? What, what are, what are their actual jobs? Can they not be taking out?
What, what happens is, we, we have people that come in the office and we make work orders. And what we got to do is prioritize the work orders. We can't just go out there because you brought it in.
Do you have anything you have in that position?
I got Willie doing north side, Homer doing the south side. The two foremen are taking care of half the county. Prioritizing what we're going to do tomorrow. Al must take care of payroll invoices, all that, that answering phones. Me, I'm dealing with oil field people, trying to get them to fix these roads and all that. Sign man's been out there trying to finish up our sign project. A mechanic, well, he's been out, phew, a couple of months, I guess. But anyway, we don't have a mechanic. But we need a mechanic because we're just taking one of my blade men and getting him to work on the stuff. And we're having to take a man from there to send the equipment to San Antonio to halt and everywhere else to get repaired. And that's where we are, that's where all the support is.
Six new labor positions would cost approximately $232,000.
Well, now's the choice. People are here.
That new 50,000, you're a contractor now. It seems like you're just chasing the tail with all these work. I would spend my money on a contract.
Yeah, well, this is, this is just a regular everyday thing. This isn't, this is just everyday work. Potholes that we have right now, go to Fall City, I got Monster Park, go right here, 305, I got, and what happens is you got to have two flagmen, three guys out there go pothole. Yeah, but we still, we got to have three of them shovel it. And they'll jump from road to road to road.
On this?
Yeah, I hear one side, you know, we're going to go contract and now we're going up, now we're up to 32 people. You know, it's the commissary's court has got to control this thing and either, and you either tell him that you're going to get 26 or 32 people, whatever number you come up with, or you're going to contract this and get this down to a crew of 14 people so they can do maintenance. You sit here and talk about this thing all afternoon and it's getting laid over.
He is saying, I guess, that he needs the staff he's asking for just to maintain the roads. Not just for maintenance of roads. Uh, it doesn't include trading because he's contracted that out. It doesn't include a new construction, but just for, you know, filling potholes and.
Flagging.
Flagging needs 32 people. That's, that's the statement I'm hearing. And that, and, and I'm cutting down Georgia cane, I mean, I'm not trying to.
Well, you got to take the administrative part out because they're not out there on the road.
Right. You're right. My personal belief is approve the budget as the contracting and have that money lumped in. The way we have it right now is for materials, contractors, et cetera. And then let Mike educate us further after we get this budget done. We've got to get this done, Mike. And I think there's still enough back and forth or we're doing it where you're talking about is the right way that we, we can go ahead and get the budget done, get the approval of the amount, and then we go from there to see how it's allocated.
Yeah, because it's y'all's choice. Whether yes or no, I mean, that's all I need.
And uh.
But yes, I'm going to give you five, but no, I'm not.
There, we're, we're trying to allocate your ammunition in the right way. And that's all we're trying to do. And uh, so I'd, I'd recommend let's prove the budget amount, get that done. And then if, if Mike says, well, I need 240 to hire these new people and comes in and convinces the crews to report that, that's fine with me.
I agree.
Well.
I'm going to do what we got. Also, on the budget, I need to, and I got one on it, I want to put a line item instead of crumping everything together. And I would like to have a line item on the 1747, a line item on the turs and a line item on the equipment. It's easier to monitor the spending on that instead of having to clump it to the one.
I think what we should do is just what Judge Butler said, is lump it all right now to get this budget finished and then he can come back to y'all and y'all can approve equipment allocations, new personnel allocations, material allocations. We know 7.7 is Senate Bill 1747 and we could separate out the C Turs monies also. And then he's not going to have a whole lot left for anything else.
Mike, this, how I would like to do it, uh, we've got to get through the budget and the tax rate first. And then we'll deal with exactly how to allocate the money. We're not talking about waiting months. I mean, next commission of court meeting after the first this month, we can get, we can address that problem. It shouldn't wait for months, but I just feel like you might want to sit down and really concentrate on, on the plan of action that you can show them. Uh, but in view of the money area being allocated, how much you think you can do if you do it this way? You know, so that, they'll get a perception of what you're talking about. We know you say we'd like to this, you'd like to that. But show me in terms of now that you know what your dollars are, what are you going to be able to do? You know, and, and that's how I'd like to see it translated. And everybody then would know, okay, well, if we do it this way, there's how many miles of road, which kind of road it's going to be, where, all that kind of stuff. That, that's, if you could have that ready by that mid-October meeting, that'd be great. Then we could really talk about it and make sense of it.
Yeah, it'd probably be later than that, but yeah, go get it.
Soon as you can get it. Soon as you can get it. I appreciate it. Just then.
Question. On a random drug testing, $20,720, $20,720. Is there that big of a problem in the road and bridge?
I think it's Department of Transportation.
You got to do that for truck drivers.
Yeah, you know, it's like, it's a big industry now.
And it is, and it is being done.
Yeah, that's what, you know, they, they have to.
But that's a lot of money.
Just then.
It's a lot of road.
But the Department of Transportation requires that, I believe. There's no, it's not like we could decide that. It's not good, anyway, have to.
And there's no, no departments in the whole rest of the county have any.
Any of them have to do with transportation, I believe, dude.
CDL license.
CDL license, right. But it's, it's because they deal with transportation, that's why.
All right.
All right.
We already took care of the pay scale and that in the basis of everything that I have.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. What's next?
Pretty close.
We're working on that.
All of this is just basic stuff.
My hope is we get it down around 22, 23 cents. Just slightly above rollback rate. And uh, we're working on it. Now, I've, all the money going to road and bridge right now has to go to road and bridge. The C Turs money, the special road and bridge tax money, 1747 money, that all has to go to road and bridge, no matter what we do. And so that, it still gives considerable amount of money, but it is, it's already allocated. I can't cut any more from that budget. Am I correct?
Yes.
I think that's right. It still leaves a lot of money, a lot of money put in roads. Of course, we always say we don't want to put any of those unencumbered funds in there, but I, I don't think that's fair. I think we need to make it some sense on investment in our roads and bridges. And uh, I think, Beeble County, there's a lot of them that want those road and bridges fixed and there's a lot of them that don't want the tax rate up that high. So I'm kind of, we're kind of caught in the corner of trying to reach a good middle ground is what we're trying to do. And uh, that's the best way I see it, but. Okay. Lateral road funds, we have to talk about that?
No. That's state allocated funds that come down.
We have the county library fund, proposed budgets. Anybody have any questions about that?
Of course, again, all those will have salary adjustments going to.
All of that salary adjustments, that's correct. For someone.
Actually, they all will because they're all limited at the 15% right now.
They're all 15%?
Yes.
Nobody has any questions about that? Interesting thinking there's no.
There's no D Ls.
Paying off debt?
Yes.
That's what that is. Court house security fund budget.
That is funding a bailiff for all courts. Of course, that will be adjusted to the midpoint range. Plus, we also have $10,000 in there for metal detectors at the courtroom entrance. That is in this current budget, but it has never been purchased.
They never bought them, that's not fair.
Are we planning to put those in?
That had been the discussion, like I said, in this year's budget. It's just never taken place.
We've talked about judge over the last year, but nobody's ever directed us one way or the other, so.
If we're not going to do it, let's take it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody feels a need to.
One of the deputies of bailiff.
They kill judges and lawyers sometimes. Some of them, like me, might be good at it.
He does when there's court, yeah. But they want a dedicated bailiff. Cause we're going to have court here, court at the bail, we'll have.
Can I see?
Courts are jail, that'd be a plenty of unfortunate people hanging around there. Right? Robert's a bailiff for us.
Yes, sir.
All right. Parliament building improvement fund.
Those are funds we receive annually from GEO as part of our contract, $6,000 that are for the courthouse restoration.
Emergency services district for further budget.
That is the rural fire budget. The court actually does not have any control over that budget. It is just included as part of the county budget because we collect the funds for them and disperse them to them on reimbursement.
They're, they're dispersed on a request or is it just a quality payment?
They request and submit quarterly allocations as well as they get a per-fire response allocation.
Justice's repeat, court fees estimated budget.
This is what Judge DeNueva had to ask about earlier as far as that $45,000 expenditure. Those are the various amounts by JP, but those expenditures will go through the IT department for approval.
District and county court fee estimated budget. So these are fees such as we had a hearing about the other day.
Correct. And this will be where some of that money comes from to repair those boats and then those, of course, now since the fees are increasing, we'll probably generate more revenue from it this year.
General records management fees, I know that was, another one was discussed.
And if we do a countywide shredding event, that's where these monies can fund that.
Sheriff's office forfeiture fund.
Those are monies that they have from various forfeitures, either seized vehicles that have been sold or other items. And they are budgeting $3,000 out of that for computers and/or officer training.
And they're still, they're supposed to come out money ahead.
Yes.
Is that correct? I think that is our department by department analysis of this budget, ladies and gentlemen. It seems that we have reached, I know we have reached consensus on all the items in this budget that we've made revisions to. I appreciate all the input that we have from all of you about this. We will work the numbers on this budget and we will calculate what it does to the tax rate. It obviously is going to drive it down some to 30% from quotas. The exact number we will know till we get the calculations done. I'm hopeful that we can do somewhere at 22, 23 cents, something like that. I'm just guessing on that, but I'm hopeful that we can do that. We will meet again Friday on budget and we will adopt a budget for the fiscal year. And when we do that, we'll, at the time we do it, we'll know what the tax rate is and we'll come in here and if it produces a tax rate that the commissioners don't want to approve with, then we're going to have to start cutting some items out. And uh, I think we'll cut the easy things. It's going to get harder now. And so we'll have to start, start doing that if we feel like the tax rate we're proposing is insupportable. I'm hoping that will be the case. I'm hoping that we get this thing figured right and we'll get down there and, and a number that folks who are urging a rollback election will reconsider. But you've seen the effort we've made to try to, to try to get this right. I mean, I know we haven't done everything that everybody's wanted to do, but it's, we've gone through a process now where we're analyzing our budgetary needs instead of just saying, well, we got X number of dollars to spend, let's see what we can allocate it to. You know, we're, we're doing it differently. And I hope we can get countywide support for this budget. I think it deserves your support. I'm going to now ask for a motion to recess the budget hearing and we will resume, we'll take a brief break and then we'll begin the tax rate here. To be honest with you, I think it's, we'll have it, well, because I have to have it. It's required. And we will briefly discuss that and then we'll go, during the meeting and we'll. and we'll see, anybody wants to come back Friday?
Judge, I have a question. Yes, sir. I wanted to ask you something. And I, I bring this up every year, I've been here quite a long time, but I bring this up every year. But now here, I have on the job description, job descriptions, on the qualifications, on the testing, the majority of these have drug tests on it, and almost all the job descriptions.
That was put in by the seeking firm. I'm not sure why they put that in there. We don't require county employees that I know of, except.
You need hours with the sheriff's office, that'd be drug test.
Yeah, I think a lot of enforcement in transportation there.
BMs.
You see, that's been my problem for all the years I've been here, and I bring it up every time, every time it doesn't go through, but I, I still bring it up, 'cause a lot of people during the year ask me, does all the county employees get drug tested? And I say, now we, you know, there's certain ones that get drug tested. Judge, I would just like maybe one of these days to see it, be at random for all their employees, not just certain ones. I don't know how we could do that, but I've been asking every year to, every year since I've been here, if there's some way we can do it to where it's, we're not gonna spend the money, but we can have the money there, 'cause I know if the years pass, they go, well, that's a lot of money to spend it. You don't have to spend it. I put there at random, so nobody knows.
Is there a reason that you believe we have a drug problem?
No, there's not a reason. I just think that to know that we have a, a clear county employees and everything, I mean, it's not. We do have a drug problem, I mean, not in the county, but, I mean, in the county, but, and I say with the employees.
But you never know.
But you never know, right?
Well, what businesses do drug testing?
I, I.
It works at discount.
Right.
And they drug test them.
Yeah, I just, I just, it's not that I think we have a problem, but how do we know we don't?
You don't know.
We don't know.
It just keeps you from someone screaming discrimination if you just pick two departments and go.
That's what I'm saying. I've been, I've been asking for this for, for fifteen years, and it's been turned out, shut down every time. And I wanna find out a way to make it go around it.
Do our kids even get drug tested in school if they're in any type of, you know?
That's what I'm saying.
Any activities or anything, so I'll make sure the county employees shouldn't get drug tested as well.
I think they should. Every last single, and even elected officials.
If you wanna, if you wanna do that, you should put it on the next agenda. We can't, can't, not only agenda, we can't do it in the budget.
No, I know, but we would have to have an amount in the budget for that, that's what I'm saying. Do honor, isn't that correct? We would have to have, say, fifty thousand dollars.
Either that, or it could come out of the contingency fund.
It could come out of that, too.
Sure.
If y'all wanna have it set up, we have it set up through the Carnt City Clinic here where we send our employees. We're set up, ready to go. If y'all need for us to, you know, if y'all wanna set it up, we, I can get with them.
Well, if you're talking about elected officials, and you get somebody tested positive, you don't ever kick them out.
Yeah, but you just wouldn't know who's running the county or who's doing this, or, I mean, I don't see the, I mean, I'm asking the fucking, what do y'all think of y'all's money, too?
I'm pretty hesitant. This is a can of worms that we don't need to be opening right now. We've got a budget we need to get taken care of. We've got a tax rate to do.
I agree.
This isn't a can of worms.
We'll just put it on the agenda, then.
Yeah, I'll.
Put it on the agenda.
Get it on the next agenda, I'll put it myself.
Okay. Anybody else see anything? All right, uh, do I have a motion to dismiss this hearing? Or adjourn?
I'm ready.
On the paper.
Aye.
Five, five minutes, we'll come back and do the budget, I mean, the tax rate. Oh, pardon me, before everybody leaves on time, to remind you, that on the twenty-sixth, I've said it about a hundred times, but starting at nine AM, we have our hearing to adopt the tax rate and to adopt the budget. Other way around, it's basically first, then tax rate. Okay? Thanks, folks.
Uh, let's ask you a question. Oh, Lord. Nobody easy one, easy one. I'm all for easy today. How do I put it on me again? I've gotta hit the hover button.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
I promise to be sharp and to be swift.
All right, we're now commencing the second tax rate hearing for the two thousand fourteen tax rate for Carnt County, Texas. Those of you who attended the first hearing that we had, I guess it was the sixteenth, know that the proposed rate for Carnt County was thirty cents per one hundred dollar evaluation of property. I went to great lengths to try and explain why. I thought that rate was justified, and then today, I guess, you got to see the, or discuss. We discussed the proposed budget that caused the rate to be at thirty cents. We have gone through that budget line by line, item by item today, and have made a significant cut in one area that I thought where any significant cuts could be made, of which was taking out about eight and a half million dollars of M and O fund taxation out of the road and bridge program. We replaced a large part of that funding with roughly, with five million dollars worth of unencumbered funds that were available for road and bridge. I consider the reconstruction of these roads to be capital improvement, so I don't have any problem with doing that. And they still have roughly forty percent of the unencumbered funds that were on hand, still on hand. My thought is, the budget we went through will produce a tax rate considerably lower than the thirty cents that we have proposed. I can't give you the exact figure, it's gonna take some calculations. I would expect it to be somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-five cents. I think, of course, that puts us far below any adjoining county, Eagle Ford or not. And you've seen what the money's going to. So I, you know, my thought is that we need to support this budget with the tax rate that's necessary to pay for that budget. Any of you commissioners have any further comment on that?
I'll comment on it. I, I talked to quite a few people, and they seemed that they would be satisfied with twenty-five cent tax rate. They didn't wanna see it there, they, they thought that twenty-five cents a year was reasonable enough. I know the tax, the tax rate needs to be kept up, 'cause it's gonna be tough when this evaluation starts going down, so we don't wanna get, need to get, or go rolling it right now. And of course, I took just the general numbers, and I put, if you multiply it by the tax valuation for terrors, it'd be a million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars less, and the general fund would've been reduced by three million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars less, and total reduction, five eighty-three hundred and sixty-five thousand. So, that's just the general figures of what I had for, for how much we'd be able to book on that, so I think we should be below twenty-five cents.
I would think so. And, uh, we'll know for sure, I don't wanna see the, the working of the budget numbers. And for those of you who were supportive, Bernie, the thirty cent tax rate, I guess my rationale in dropping down to a lower number is to try to, you know, I guess I'm a little more of a compromiser sometimes than I'm a fighter. I've tried a lot of lawsuits where I had to go in and absolutely fight, you know, to the verdict on cases. But I feel like in politics, it's a little bit different. I've seen too much no compromise, screw the inside politics in American government in the last few years, and it really, I don't think it's been very productive for us. I think we've ended up with driving people to extremes on each side. And those of us who, like, consider myself, be kind of in the middle, we feel kinda like, who do we belong to? And, uh, so what I think is that this is a way to unify, hopefully unify the county, get people to get behind what we're doing, and see if we can, you know, like I said, move the county forward. I think we've got, we went through the budget process for a long time, trying to make sure we didn't put stuff in there that people found jigsaw. I know it's not perfect, and I think it's, it's a paraparlism, and hopefully the tax rate you will consider to be the fairer tax rate. Like I said, I thought thirty cents was also a very fair tax rate, but enough people felt it wasn't, that I felt like we were running the risk of having a rollback election. If we got sent all the way back to rollback rate, it'd be a real problem. And we're, we're gonna have some serious, serious budgetary shortcomings, and we're gonna have a real problem when these evaluations start going down. And to show how that is, I got some valuations on a couple of interest side wells, and in one-year period, they dropped over sixty percent. Because for me, I'm paying the taxes on them, but if that trend continues, unless they keep the drilling up to the rate that it is, or had was last year, I don't think they will, long term. We're gonna see serious drops in those mineral values, and the regular landowners are gonna pick up the balance. It's gonna be a real problem. Anyway, uh, anybody else? Shelby?
Well, I was gonna tell you, I, you know, I still support the thirty cent rate. I just, I just have a concern that this is gonna go south one day. And, uh, I don't know, uh, you know, I don't mind dipping into our reserves, the unencumbered funds, and, by the way, how much we got by?
Thirty-six altogether.
So, and I'm gonna make sure you, thirty-six, thirty-five, whatever we got. But, but I guess my concern is I wanna make sure we have at least, I don't know what's comfortable, but you need to have at least twenty-five, thirty percent of operating capital of your budget in case something goes south somewhere. And that's, that's my personal opinion, but I will tell you this, whatever the court comes up with, I will support.
I also, I also met with a lot of people and talked about them. Nobody wanted the point three zero, but they look forward to taxes going up, and they understand that we have to invest in the county, but they were talking more like a point zero four, point zero six, going up to like a twenty, twenty-two seventy, twenty-four seventy. They were okay with that, but none of them even wanted to go even close to a point three zero.
Same.
Well, that's the input I've been getting, and so, you know, we're trying to give people what they want. And like I said, it's not, not perfect, and by any means, I know that we, you know, we, we may regret decisions we make, but I think this is fairly well thought of that process, and hopefully we're making the right choice. I don't know what else we can say. The budget, as I said in the first tax rate hearing, the budget drives that tax rate. It's not the other way around. At least it shouldn't be. And, uh, you have to dissect your budget and get down and try to remove the waste. But I, I think now we're providing still a very significant sum of money to the county road and bridge, which we basically committed when we decided to throw the whole county into a seaters' zone for a road and bridge. So they got to capture all the increased valuations in the whole county and dedicate it strictly to road and bridge. And that's what happened. So to move the rest of the county forward, we have to be able to do anything to provide for the other increases we need. We have to get a tax rate increase. I think it's, it's very reasonable right now. And on the salaries, I'll just say this, I, I think it would be a bad, bad sign for this county if we won't pay, and a county swimming in money like this one is now, and of course, that doesn't mean everybody. But in a county where money is this plentiful and we're enjoying this kind of prosperity, if we can't pay our county employees a decent living wage, at least in a mid-level of surrounding counties, we've got a real problem in attitude. And I think we need to, need to take care of the people that work for us, and at the same time, we need to start insisting on excellence in what they do. And, uh, I think everybody, well, the department has to go out and start, start making sure that's delivered, and so will the personnel there. Anything from the audience? I believe then we will close down the tax hearing, and once again, I wanna remind you, show up for the tax adoption on the, on the twenty-sixth.
Nine AM.
Thank you very much.
Oh, very right.
Right.
Thank you, I wanna.
Is that a nine o'clock meeting, or is that an afternoon or evening?
Nine. Nine o'clock.